Proceedings are resumed.
Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The second reading of the bill is moved. Does the Honorable Minister and Deputy Premier wish to speak thereto?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, very briefly. Mr. Speaker, I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It's a bill that makes consequential amendments to the Banks and Trust Companies Act 2021 revision to include references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, the amendment two, the principal act being the Banks and Trust Companies Act, is really just as a consequence, and the background that I set out in my presentation of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 is repeated here. Mr. Speaker, due to the proposed removal of the beneficial ownership provisions from the Companies Act that are mentioned in the Companies Act, those references to the Companies Act, I should say, the Limited Liability Companies Act and the Limited Liability Partnership Act in the bank and trust companies legislation need to be replaced with references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. The bill is therefore, Mr. Speaker, arranged in four clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out it will commence by order of cabinet. Clauses two, three, and four replace the references regarding beneficial ownership that reference the Companies Act 2023 revision, the Limited Liability Company Act 2023 revision, and the Limited Liability Partnership Act 2023 revision, if those be replaced with the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, that concludes my presentation of the bill. I therefore thank my colleagues in caucus and cabinet for their support and hopefully the tacit support of the opposition. I therefore commend the bill, the Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023, to this Honorable House for its second reading.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier. Does any other member wish to speak? Honorable Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I will be very brief, just to signal that we in the opposition fully support the amending bill. And I signal as well, Mr. Speaker, that's allowable that the remaining bills that he, the minister and the deputy premier has to bring forward this afternoon will also have our support. So I probably don't intend to get up and speak to everyone, but just to signal here that we will support, we are supporting all of these amending bills here this afternoon. So thank you very much, sir, with those few words, we support it all.
Thank you, Honorable Leader of the Opposition. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to thank the Leader of the Opposition for that support and an indication of supporting the remaining consequential amendment bills. We can therefore move through this, these, the remaining eight swiftly. So thank you for that, Mr. Leader, and thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier. The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be read a second time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? No. The ayes have it. The bill is deemed to have been read a second time.
Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
Does the Minister wish to speak thereto?
Very briefly, Mr. Speaker. The, I rise to present this short bill on behalf of the government that amends the Companies Act 2023 revision to remove provisions relating to the beneficial ownership regime, as these will now be consolidated in the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, the bill is set out in four clo, sorry, six clauses. Clause one of the bill provides for the title of the bill and sets out that it will commence by order of cabinet. Mr. Speaker, clause two of the bill repeals section 80d of the Companies Act, which exempts specific companies from the beneficial ownership parts of the act, as that is now being consolidated in the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. Clause three of the bill, which relates to the strikeoff, replaces a reference to part of the Companies Act relating to beneficial ownership with the reference to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Clause four of the bill, Mr. Speaker, repeals parts 17a and 17b of the Companies Act, which provides for beneficial ownership registers and administrative fines, as these are now form part of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, clause five of the bill removes the reference to schedule seven of the Companies Act, because this schedule is now placed in the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. Clause six, Mr. Speaker, repeals schedules six and seven of the Companies Act, because these schedules are now placed in the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. Mr. Speaker, that concludes my presentation of this short bill. I therefore commend the Companies Amendment Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second reading.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If no other member wishes to speak, I invite the Honorable Deputy Premier to exercise his right of reply.
Just to say thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you colleagues for their support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be read a second time. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill has been given a second reading.
Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Very briefly, Mr. Speaker. I rise to present this bill on behalf of the government as it makes consequential amendments to the Companies Management Act 2021 revision to include references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. The bill, Mr. Speaker, is arranged in four clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out that it will commence by cabinet order. Mr. Speaker, clauses two, three, and four of the bill replace references in relation to beneficial ownership that refer to the Companies Act, the Limited Liability Companies Act, with references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. Mr. Speaker, that concludes my presentation of the bill, and I commend it to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services to exercise his right of reply, although there's nothing to reply to.
Nothing to reply to, but, Mr. Speaker, just to say thanks to colleagues for their support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 has been given a second reading.
Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
Your Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, very briefly as well. Mr. Speaker, I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It is a bill that amends the Foundation Companies Act 2017 revision to provide for the application of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill to a foundation company. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in two clauses. Clause one of the bill, Mr. Speaker, provides the, provides the title of the bill and sets out that it will commence by cabinet order. Clause two of the bill adds the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 to the list of legislation that applies to a foundation company under the Foundation Companies Act. Mr. Speaker, that concludes my presentation of this short bill. I therefore commend the Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second reading.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I'll call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Briefly, just to say thank you to this Honorable House for its support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Those against? No. The ayes have it. The Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023 has been given a second reading.
Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Mr. Speaker, I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled "Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023."
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Again, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Very briefly, I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It's a bill that makes consequential amendments to the Insurance Act 2010 to include references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in four clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out it will commence by cabinet order. Mr. Speaker, clauses two, three, and four of the bill replace references relating to beneficial ownership provisions that reference the Companies Act, the Limited Liability Companies Act, and the Limited Liability Partnership Act, with references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, that concludes my short presentation of this bill. I therefore commend the Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Very briefly, just to say thank you to colleagues of this Honorable House for their support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled "The Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023" be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? No. The ayes have it. The Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 has been given a second reading.
Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Mr. Speaker, I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled "Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023."
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, very briefly. I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It is a bill that amends the Limited Liability Companies Act 2023 revision to remove provisions relating to the beneficial ownership regime, as these have now been consolidated into the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in three clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out that it will commence by cabinet order. Mr. Speaker, clause two of the bill repeals parts 10A and 12 of the Limited Liability Companies Act 2023, which provide for beneficial ownership registers and administrative fines, as these now form part of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Clause three of the bill repeals the schedule of the Limited Liability Companies Act 2023 revision, because this schedule is now placed in the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, that concludes my presentation of this short bill. I therefore commend the Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you very much, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you colleagues of this Honorable House for their support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled "Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023" be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? No. The ayes have it. The Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023 has been given a second read.
Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled "Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023."
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I do. I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It is a bill that amends the Limited Liability Partnership Act 2023 revision to remove provisions relating to the beneficial ownership regime, as these have now been consolidated into the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged into three clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out it will commence by cabinet order. Mr. Speaker, clause two of the bill, which relates to strike-off, replaces a reference to part of the Limited Liability Partnership Act 2023 revision relating to beneficial ownership, as this reference is now included in the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Clause three of the bill repeals part eight and nine and the schedule of Limited Liability Partnership Act 2023, which provides for beneficial ownership registers and administrative fines, as these are now form part of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, this concludes my presentation of this short bill. I therefore commend the Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to honorable colleagues for their support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled "Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023" be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? No. The ayes have it. The Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023 has been given a second read.
Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled "Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023."
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, very briefly. I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It is a bill that makes consequential amendments to the Mutual Funds Act 2021 revision to include references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in four clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out that it will commence by cabinet order. Clause, clauses two, three, and four of the bill, Mr. Speaker, replace references regarding beneficial ownership that reference the Companies Act, the Limited Liability Companies Act, the Limited Liability Partnership Act, with references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, this concludes my presentation of this bill. I therefore commend the Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you colleagues, honorable colleagues, for your support.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled "Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023" be given a second read. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? No. The ayes have it. Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023 has been given a second read.
Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Bill Number Two, 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled "Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023."
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services wish to speak thereto?
Yes, and very briefly, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise to present the bill on behalf of the government. It's a bill that makes consequential amendments to the Virtual Asset Service Providers Act 2022 revision to include references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in four clauses. Clause one of the bill provides the title of the bill and sets out that it will commence by cabinet order. Clause, clauses two, three, and four, Mr. Speaker, of the bill replace references regarding beneficial ownership that reference the Companies Act, the Limited Liability Companies Act, and the Limited Liability Partnership Act, with references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Mr. Speaker, this concludes my presentation of the bill. I therefore commend the Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Very briefly, to thank our honorable colleagues, not only for their support, but the swiftness in which we've dealt with these minor consequential amendment bills. Thank you, colleagues.
The question is that a bill entitled, shortly entitled "Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023" be given a second read. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? No. The ayes have it. Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 has been given a second read.
National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023.
The Minister, Honorable Minister for Labor on pensions.
Testing. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I start, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to take this opportunity that I didn't get earlier to congratulate you on your new post. I, in the role of Speaker, I have now witnessed you in every position possible in politics, I think. Unless I stand to be corrected, as former premier, I think there's some history being made here today as the first premier who had been elected to consecutive terms and as premier and now as a speaker, minister, and then also be knighted all in one year, it seems. Sometimes I'm confused, Mr. Speaker, as what to call you. Perhaps, Sir Speaker Premier?
Just don't call me late for dinner.
And I don't believe that the parliament has had four speakers who were elected in one cohort, in yourself, the good honorable Madame Premier, the former premier and member for West Bay West, and also the honorable minister for West Bay Central. And and sorry, and also so five honorable member from Georgetown South, yes. So, I think there's some notes to be made here today. Mr. Speaker, I beg to move the second reading of the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2003.
2023.
Sorry, that's what fool does you. 2023, I beg correction.
Perhaps you can do it all over again so that the record is clear?
I think that's Honorable Speaker, I beg to move the second reading of the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill has been duly moved. Does the Honorable Minister wish to speak thereto?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members of this honorable house will be aware of economic and housing difficulties currently facing Caymanians and the need in this current landscape is more for flexible flexibility to pension plan members as it pertains to allowing them to make withdrawals for essential purposes without jeopardizing their long-term financial security. That is to say, the proposed pension withdrawals are not emergency withdrawals for immediate cash in hand and are instead strategic withdrawals aimed at facilitating specific life milestones. I must admit, Mr. Speaker, that as much as I am excited for persons who get this opportunity to utilize their pension, I caution about concerns of many about the future. The amendments contained in this bill aim to increase the maximum amount of withdrawals from pension plans for specific purposes. For example, making deposits on the purchase or construction of homes, purchasing additional residential property, making reduction payments on mortgages or real estate loans, and paying off mortgages, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this special meeting for parliament that we're having today wasn't just for the Speaker's appointment, but also to ensure, and I don't make light of that, but also to ensure that we did all possible to make this opportunity available for persons before Christmas. Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the mover of the motion member from Bodentown West. And I know later on he will thank the minister. And I know later on he will thank the minister, and the former minister, who was also me and now the minister again. Mr. Speaker, as I mentioned when I first brought this bill to this Honorable House, our mission is crystal clear. Empower every Caymanian to own a piece of the land that we call home. These proposed changes will pave a pathway for people to facilitate, that facilitates home ownership, property investment, and mortgage reduction, ultimately enhancing the overall quality of life for Caymanians, and further asserting this government's unwavering commitment to ensure that every Caymanian has a brighter and more secure future. The key amendments to this act are as follows, Mr. Speaker. Number one, increasing the maximum withdrawal allowed for home purchase or construction from $35,000 to $50,000 in Section 52B. Number two, allowing for a maximum withdrawal for a reduction payment on an existing mortgage or residential land loan in the amount of $50,000. Changes are reflected in the new section of 52BA of the act. Number three, increasing the maximum withdrawal allowed for the payoff of an existing mortgage from $35,000 to $100,000. These amendments can be found, Mr. Speaker, in Section 52C. Number four, inserting new requirements that any withdrawals must be used for the member's primary residence, not investment property. Number five, adding new requirements in support of compliance before permitting further withdrawals, applicants must provide evidence that any prior withdrawals are being repaid or have been repaid in accordance with legislation. Number six, currently the act requires a member to repay an additional 1% contribution for 10 years or until the normal age of the pension entitlement, 60 or 65. However, it is recommended that the 1% additional contribution should be increased to 3% and the 10-year requirement should be removed in Section 52D. Mr. Speaker, currently, Section 52E limits persons to the total of 35,000 in aggregate withdrawals from more than one pension plan, which has been amended to $50,000. The amendment inserts a new subsection, 1A, that changes the limit to $100,000 in case of the payoff of a mortgage. Mr. Speaker, number eight, insertion of two new sections, 4A and 4B, supporting operational functions by requiring the source of funds for the purchase of the property, and mandating that any funds withdrawn under this section and not used for the purchase of the intended property should be returned to the pension plan administrator within six months of withdrawal, within six months of withdrawal, except where the dwelling unit is being constructed and the full withdrawal was not used, in which case the amount is to be returned within 12 months of the withdrawal instead. Number nine, updating wording regarding purchasing and construction from an existing dwelling unit to no more than two dwelling units to allow for the use of funds to extend to a duplex. Previously, in order to commence with the withdrawals process, the act required a financial institution to issue a letter to the member that details the amount that is required for a deposit or to pay off a mortgage. The act, however, did not contain any language to govern the content of the letter, which has caused some problems and concerns. Accordingly, the introduction of minimum parameters for the letter has been added under 52B, 52BA, and 52C. Currently in the act, if the member sells their property prior to retirement, the person has to repay the withdrawal amount of 10% of the fair market value. However, if the person sells the property post-retirement, there is no obligation to repay any amount. As a result, a member could wait until retirement and then sell the property, which would allow the person to receive directly any amount that was required to be repaid in the pension plan. Furthermore, the member's use of those funds would be entirely at the discretion, instead of being governed by the retirement provisions of the act. In order to address this issue and support compliance in the bill, the language has been amended to the sale of the property before the repayment of the withdrawal amount would require the person to repay the higher of the withdrawal amount of 10% of fair market Insertion of new sections, 78A, 78B, 78C, and 78D to allow for improved governance of the National Pension Board, in particular, remuneration and immunity of board members, appointment and functions of committees, meeting of the board, and duty of confidentiality. These amendments were guided by the comparable sections of the Immigration Transition Act 2022 revision. The amendments, I'll just summarize, Mr. Speaker, seeks to strike a balance between addressing the immediate financial needs of people as much as possible while preserving the long-term financial security of pension plan members by increasing additional compensation to repay some of the withdrawn amounts. Those provisions, Mr. Speaker, however, come with a set of well-thought-out checks and balances, and in most cases, the withdrawals must be repaid through increased contributions, as you will note from the list of amendments I've just outlined. This bill contains additional safeguards to ensure these withdrawals are repaid so as to ensure that these changes will not invite applications for monies designed to have immediate and short-term gratification. These amendments represent a restructuring of our pensions regime and serve the broader needs of our citizens while preserving the integrity of the pensions system so that each person can live out their golden age in dignity. As a reminder, the proposed amendments do not apply to the public sector pension plan, parliamentary and judicial pension plans, which are all mostly administered by the Public Service Pension Board and are governed by the different legislation, not falling under my constitutional responsibility as minister. Mr. Speaker, in conclusion, our pension system underpins the stability of one of our most vulnerable populations, our retirees, and the changes reflected in this bill represent our commitment to adopt an approach in order to ensure that those members of our society and our Caymanians in general are taken care of today and tomorrow. These changes, Mr. Speaker, align with the government's commitment to improving the quality of life for Caymanians and will have a positive and lasting impact on the lives of the people of Cayman Islands. Mr. Speaker, I must note that whilst I knew that this amendment, this amendment to the act was coming, to the bill was coming, I, as a member of parliament, I had drafted a motion to bring a motion, in knowing what we knew about the amount of funds that would be, that have been withdrawn during the pandemic, and also the amount of funds that would be withdrawn now during this amendment, that we as elected representatives need to be responsible and also look towards the future and what this will do to our people when they need it in their golden age days. The motion that I drafted was a motion to create a social security retirement fund. The sources of where it would come from to be named, but I think we need to do something like this to protect some of our citizens so that we'll have some kind of funding, not just leaning on NAU to get funds from in your latter days when your pension runs out. So I just wanted to make note of that, and I'd also spoken to the member of Bodentown West in supporting me on that motion, and we agreed to do so. But of course, you see, we've had some change of times, and now I'm back in the him. Mr. Speaker, I wish to commend and thank my ministry, the acting chief officer, Ms. Whitaker, the DCO, Deputy Chief Officer, Ms. Roberts, Police Officer, Ms. Rolna, and other staff who are involved in bringing this forward, and also the Chief Officer, Howell, and the legal drafting department, and certainly any others involved in bringing this bill, which seeks to provide real and long-lasting financial relief to our people in these times of national economic growth, which unfortunately often translate to personal economic difficulties. Mr. Speaker, before I end, and I keep saying it all the time in private quarters and in public settings, the effects of two years of pandemic, I don't think that people, people around the world were so eager to get back to normal, to some normalcy, that we tried to forget about the pandemic and the effects that it may have caused. Yes, one person in the family may have continued to work because they weren't in the tourism industry that was hit hardest, but think of what that does to a family who depends on both incomes, and one person working in the financial industry, one person working in the tourism industry that went, the ports were closed for two years, one person working in the civil service or administration, and one person working in the tourism industry. So it affects some families of even public servants, and today we don't address, we're not addressing that. We're addressing private pensions, but I'm just saying that we are to think that the long-term effects, two years of ports and almost 50% of your population, your work population not being able to work, can't be solved in two years, three years, four years, five years. It's going to have a long-lasting effect. And yes, as we are excited to have people take from their pensions now that is something deemed for your retirement, we are still concerned about the future of our people, and make no light of that, Mr. Speaker. I therefore recommend the National Pension Amendment Bill, 2023, for the favorable consideration of this Honorable House, and I beg everyone's support as our people are waiting patiently for this day to end so they can start communicating with their pension providers. I thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you, Honorable Minister for Labor. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? A member from Bodentown West.
Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the honorable leader of opposition for giving me the first right of reply on this side of the aisle. The normal protocol is that whenever the government presents a bill, the leader of opposition speaks first, so I want to publicly thank him for giving me that leeway on this one. Equally, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank the Honorable Minister and all the members of this Honorable House for bringing this bill today. And I want to make special thank you to the Honorable Premier. Last week, when we were here, I had a discussion with members on the government, some members on the government bench, and, you know, we agreed, at least they agreed, that they would bring this bill forward as a matter of priority because they recognize that a lot of people have challenges, and I want to thank the Honorable Premier for honoring that agreement to bring this here. It didn't have to come today as a special meeting, but I am really deeply appreciative, and I'm sure the thousands of Caymanian families are deeply appreciative. As a speaker, I also want to thank the banks in advance for their cooperation on this matter. And the reason I say that, Mr. Speaker, is that some banks or some mortgages, depending on how they are structured, will have early repayment penalties, and I'm asking the banks to take a look at this motion for what it is that we are trying to achieve to help our families and to cooperate with them. This is not the time for them to be making more record profits at the expense of many people. And for the members inside here who have already seen the annual report from CIMA, although not been made public as yet, but for us who have seen it, we're already seeing the profitability in many of the sections, and while I do recognize that these are challenging times, people have a tendency of making profit during challenging times, and I don't need to mention one particular company was also just made record profits during challenging times. Mr. Speaker, the purpose of a pension is to allow people to maintain a certain standard of living during their retirement age. I know there are many people out there who are questioning or are basically encouraging the government not to pass this pension, and to some of them, they see that as raiding the pension plans. But if you think about it, Mr. Speaker, when a person has an opportunity to pay down or pay off their mortgage much quicker, especially in these period of high inflation, we're actually doing a service to our people. To put this in context, Mr. Speaker, I'm sure many people listening would be familiar with a mortgage calculator. Anyone who's going out to buy real estate, the first thing they do is go online, look for a mortgage calculator, look at the amount that they borrow in, the interest rate, the term, and they work out, have an idea what their monthly payments are. But, Mr. Speaker, I'm going to ask for the people to look at something called an inflation calculator, and that is what the effect of inflation would have on savings. So to put that in context, Mr. Speaker, and I use a hundred thousand. If you have an inflation rate of 5%, and you're sitting on $100,000 cash today, in one year, that hundred thousand is worth $9,5,238. In five years, that same hundred thousand is worth $78,353, and in 10 years, that same hundred thousand is worth $61,391. That's 5%. Mr. Speaker, we have seen inflation in Cayman. we have seen inflation in Cayman reach as high as over 9%. And did that same hundred thousand at a 9% inflation rate, Mr. Speaker, in one year, a hundred thousand is worth ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. In five years, at the inflation rate of 9%, a hundred thousand is worth sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. And in 10 years, that same hundred thousand is worth forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. That is the effect of inflation. So when you do see United States Fed raising interest rate, trying to curb inflation, that is part of what it is that they're trying to do. For people who have lived in countries with very high inflation, they have seen their buying power, their savings and everything being eroded almost overnight. Not to single out any arm, country arm, Madam, uh, Mr. Speaker, so I'm still adjusting, but it is a problem. So if we have an opportunity now, in these high inflationary times, to have someone take a hundred thousand dollars and do something useful with it and not have that burden in the later years in life, I think is actually something that's pretty good. What's the use, Mr. Speaker, of having people have pension plans in some cases that are losing money, but then going out and still paying a landlord or a mortgage close to 10%? That really makes no sense. So this initiative itself is almost a no-brainer. I do understand also, Mr. Speaker, and this is one of the things that the motion did call for, was a select committee to actually, for members of this house to actually sit down and have a very honest conversation with what the future of Cayman needs to look like. The minister touched on it during his AM speech where he talked about the social security. And the truth of the fact is, Mr. Speaker, it is something that is needed, is a social safety net. As I said last week, Mr. Speaker, we have 95% of our population making a living from providing a service. God forbid, one of them gets sick with a stroke or a heart attack or something where they can no longer earn a living, what will happen to their families? In short, Mr. Speaker, we have a situation where 95% of our population, just about, is one medical emergency away from being bankrupt. This, I don't think is something that anyone wants to look at. Earlier today, we looked at the beneficial ownership and we talk about global standards. And again, part of the whole idea of having a select committee is to look at the global standards with regards to employee benefits. We can't be sitting down here and looking to do every global standard, which is good for business, but at the same time, not have the same global standard for our people. And having a social security safety net has to be part of that discussion. Equally, Mr. Speaker, one of the other things that we need to look at in Cayman is our dependency ratio. Now, this is the census which I still walk with, and I will tell people to read it when you can. If you were to look at that census back in 2021, it would tell you that the Cayman Islands has a dependency ratio of roughly 35%. What is that dependency ratio, Mr. Speaker? It's pretty much a ratio that look at your working age population and your non-working age population and who's dependent on who. And 35% is typically what you find in most modern countries, the most developed countries, where 35% of the workforce is dependent on 65% of the workforce. And the, and basically what it calculates is those 15 and younger and those 65 and older versus everyone else in between. That is pretty much a productive age. But, Mr. Speaker, if I was to take out the Caymanians versus non-Caymanians in a same census report, you'll find that the Cayman, the Caymanian dependency ratio is actually 50%, which is actually one of the highest in the world, where we literally have 50% of our population that is of working age, productive age, dependent on, and that of 50% dependent on them. That, Mr. Speaker, is not something that we should take very lightly. And this is one of the reasons why we need to sit down and have that conversation. Mr. Speaker, equally, if you look at this 2021 census, it would tell you that the median age in Cayman is 38 years of age. Or does that compare globally? The global median age is actually 30.5. What that basically is, is 50% of the population is above, is 38 and above, and 50% is 38 and below. So we do have a structural problem and nowhere can we see more as politicians when we look at the average voter age. The last statistic that has been provided, the average voter age in this country, despite the median age being 38, is actually 53. That's the average age of our voter inside here, 53. I have the second, one of the second youngest constituency at 49. And 49, I want to agree, is pretty much no spring chicken, although people may think otherwise. But the point I'm making, Mr. Speaker, is that we do have structural issues that we need to also look at. So while this pension and this bill itself or these changes may be somewhat of a short-term fix for a lot of the challenges that people are having today, nonetheless, it is something that we need to sit down and have the conversation in terms of what our pension needs to look like going forward. We'll really recognize, Mr. Speaker, that the current system itself has its own challenges. We have a contribution rate of 10%. What that simply means is a person worked for 50 years at 10%, um, it basically takes 10 years to save one year's salary at a 10% contribution rate. You worked for 50 years, you'd have saved five years' salary. And if you're lucky enough where those is invested wisely, that five years may become 10 years worth of salary. But in a country, Mr. Speaker, where you have people retiring at 65, but women living to 84, it means you need 19 years' worth of salary past the age of 65. The men who are living at 79, average age of 79 mortality rate, you need 14 years' worth of salary past the age of 65. So at the end of the day, even if you have five or 10 years' worth of pension saved up, the truth of the fact is there's already a shortfall. We don't need to guess if there's already an impact on this. We already see it every time we come down here and have to deal with NGS 55 or HGA too. You know, and the irony about it is, Mr. Speaker, is that in the same census, it would tell us that 93% of our population have health insurance. But yet, last year, we spent over 70 something million dollars taking care of people from a health standpoint. And I find hard to believe that 7% of our population is what is driving 700 million dollars worth of cost in terms of healthcare. Again, when we look at when the actual pension bill got passed back in 1998, we've already seen people who have seen their pensions wiped out from the 2008 global financial crisis. And quite recently, even during AM COVID, we've already seen some pensions take a hit. So I don't know what the next five or 10 years may hold, Mr. Speaker, but I can tell you right now, today, in this high inflationary environment, having people taking a burden of themselves by being able to pay off or pay down one of their biggest financial costs on a monthly month would go very far. Simply put, Mr. Speaker, if I know one of my constituents is balance, when I spoke to him a couple of months back, when I first brought his bill, his balance on his mortgage was a hundred and thirteen thousand. And he said to me, Chris, as soon as you guys pass it, I'm going to take 13,000, pay it down, or 14,000, pay it down, get it just below the hundred, and then pay it off. I'd be nice. You can't talk to me after that, was his exact words. And another lady, she's sitting down there waiting on the same thing too, waiting to go to her husband and say, see there, we're mortgage free, we're debt free. People are waiting. We have seen, and I know I don't need to tell you guys because we're all in the same boat in this regard. We have all seen the mortgage rates gone up significantly across. And this is an opportunity now to say to the banks or to say to people for those who are not able to pay off their mortgage, is you have two options. You can pay down, and when you pay down, there are two options available to you. One, you can say to the bank, leave me the same term or the same maturity for the loan, but that will result in a lower payment. Or two, I will keep the same payment, but this will be a shorter period of time. And that is what it is that we're looking for. This at least gives many families much needed financial relief from that standpoint. Now, Mr. Speaker, I, several months back, there was an article where a famed economist was basically telling the government to think twice about doing this and, you know, not read the pension again one more time and so forth. And, Mr. Speaker, that kind of bothered me. One balance in reporting or balanced journalism we require to see, rather than get up and lambaste all the legislators who supported this initiative, is at least reach out to one legislator and ask, let us at least report on the flip side. You can't stay from overseas and not understand the plight and the struggles and the challenges of everyday Caymanian families and just pass an opinion as if it should have some weight or some authority. And this is exactly one of the things, Mr. Speaker, that we in this country need to fix. Too many people from, not from here, are comfortable in getting up and criticizing what it is that we do in this parliament. And I'm going to say to people what my mother taught me from an early age. If you come to drink milk, drink milk, don't count cows. Caymanian people's business is Caymanian people's business. Whichever country you come from, their government business is your business. Stay out of my Caymanian people's business. We have our own unique challenges. We have our own unique problems. And when we do see reports like that coming in where people from a different country that is more messed up than what we have, trying to give us advice, I want to tell you, reject it. But we have a mindset where we just always believe that everything from overseas is better than what we have here. And it, it's a disservice to what it is that we have built here as Caymanians. We have a financial services that we have just sat down here earlier to, to protect, to defend, that was built by people. It's shameful if they came back today, they couldn't get a job in the same industry that they built because they were told that they're not qualified, they don't have this or they don't have that. Mr. Speaker, I really want to thank the minister and the government for really putting this bill and supporting this motion. I have to make special thanks to you, Minister Brian, for it to get where it have gotten this far. And, and others, I know Minister Jezz always been a supporter too. Sorry, the member for Georgetown Central and the member for Northside. And also the member for Cayman Brackies, who is now premier. So I feel so much better knowing that something like this will actually go through. And I've said to the Minister of Financial Services during the break, it's for him and the premier to go and sit with the banks, meet with the banks and say, listen, this is not the time for you to try to rinse off all of the interest that you would have gotten from these people in terms of who's trying to at least make a better life for their families. House insurance is already killing people. CUC light bills are already killing people. Mortgages are already killing people. Please have a social conscience. Because I'm going to tell you, Mr. Speaker, and I'm serving warning from now, if some of these banks, and I know some of them what they are, greedy because I used to work in the banks and know who the greedy ones are, I've decided they're going to go that route, then I can tell you what, it should take nothing out of us to come inside this house and pass the necessary legislation to stop them from doing what they're doing. So it is better for them to cooperate with us in terms of what it is that we're trying to do and provide relief for our people and not look to basically squeeze as much interest as they can get in this high interest environment. Because I can tell you again, what you don't want is people struggling and suffering and then seeing record-making profits coming out of some of these entities. It's not good. And these are the kind of environment that create the type of politician that businesses don't like. We must have a balance. We must have some level of fairness. And for those out there who keep messaging me and complaining about us doing this, I can tell you right now, stop messaging me because I fully support it and I'm not going to stop. This is about people getting financial relief to help themselves in these tough economic times. And most of these people who are messaging me are people with money. It is almost like it bothers them to see other people having some kind of relief or other people having money. It goes back to that same bad mind mentality. And, Mr. Speaker, one thing I want to close on, because I know other members want to speak on this, is the civil service. They are not covered under the national pensions law, but nonetheless, they're also struggling and have the same challenge of other individuals who are covered under the national pensions law. The government needs to sit down and find a way, especially for those that are under defined contribution plan, to find some way in which we can offer some kind of assistance to them also in this regard. I know it's a delicate subject for some, but nonetheless, 26% of my voters are public servants. And I cannot sit down in good conscience and bring something and then realizing that public servants are excluded. So I don't know what the solution is going to be because the government pension is structured a little bit different and those funds are managed a little bit different. But nonetheless, it is something that we need to look at. And I feel much, much better, um, again, listening to the honorable premier out of morning on the radio with a breath of fresh air, recognizing the challenges that many Caymanian families are struggling. And I said it before, when I talk about unequal youth class week, you need people who understand middle-class families, middle-class struggles and middle-class challenges. Because I can tell you, it's a different mindset altogether. Not every one of us inside here is rich. A lot of us see a lot of people that are struggling and it's on our doorstep they're coming. And while we are fortunate enough, Mr. Speaker, to live in a society where they will come and ask us nicely, we have also not naive enough to see the increase in crime where people are now reaching a point where they're not asking so nicely. So we need to make sure we at least give our people the tools to basically make themselves better. This is our opportunity to close the dignity gap for our people. A lot of our people are hurting and a lot of our people are finding themselves in a position that they have never been in before. And it is not a good place for them mentally. And we have seen the rise in stress in this country that has been the number one killer of people, the number one driver of all the different illnesses, the stress. People sitting down and stressing, people awake at night. We see it. We're not immune to it. So I again, I want to thank the honorable minister, all the members of the government, and also the PPM opposition for supporting this motion when it came, and also for the government to actually follow in through on it. I am really deeply, truly appreciative of it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Member for Borden Town West, the member for West Be West.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And let me write off, thank the minister and his team for moving this forward so quickly after the reshuffle of government. And of course, to thank our UPM colleagues for agreeing that this has to be a priority. Madam Speaker, the motion that the member from Borden Town West talked about is one that I seconded. Yeah, yeah, you forgot. You always forget me. The, and that was so because we discussed it. We knew the situation. But it, from my standpoint, Mr. Speaker, is that I moved the motion in 1984, 88. I think in fact it was 1985, but in that administration, to get pensions, pensions, a pension bill and a labor bill, two things that I had campaigned on. And the government of the day took it on, passed the motion, but nothing got done. Nothing got done till I moved the bill as a minister of community development in 1984. That was roughly 10 years to get pensions. And we had gotten the labor, but it And we had gotten the labor, but it was bare boons. It wasn't anything because that administration then was more than careful of the environment in Georgetown and the establishment in Georgetown who fought against all two things. one of the fights with the pension, big arguments with the pension was whether we would allow people to withdraw from the pensions. Well, Mr. Speaker, those who fought against it was some who became part of the people whom became pension provider. You knew they would have been the people. All the while, they were looking for good governance and good this and good that, but what they were looking for were good pocket money. So they fought against it and the truth is, we lost the fight then, we lost the battle then. Didn't lose the war though, but we lost the battle then. We could not get that in because the powers that be, that I was part of being a minister of in that cabinet, five of us, I couldn't get anywhere with it. So then comes along 2009, 2012. I was premier and we had people like Mr. Elio and Mr. Seymour here, Mr. Seymour and the premier, present premier, were, you are, she was no part of it. No, he was our young UDB president then. But during that time, a motion was accepted to do and to get, to be able to withdraw the funds. And after a very rancid battle, get it done, it was agreed. And the big complaint and the warning was that we will make people less able to care for themselves in retirement years. Well, it is and was something that hit us, that we had to consider, that we had to be aware and still is aware. But it was a bit of hypocrisy and part of the same people, same people who fought in 10 years before and more, I guess we'll go in on Twitter then, it was the same people that were talking back in 2009, the same people who were talking in 1994. Those people, as I said, had become pension providers, some of them. And so they were, as usual, being the hypocrites that some of them can be. They never talked about the management of the funds. And they would talk about when the people lost $200 million pensioners' money. You ever, did anybody hear anything about it? Was any report made to ours, people that's supposed to be checking on these things? There must be some sort of regulatory position or body to check on it. I didn't hear anything. I knew about it, I raised it in Hansard while I was in opposition. And I think even the government at the time spoke about it. But did anybody, anybody say anything about that situation? Over $200 million, from what I understood? People's money! So here we are, the current financial environment is wreaking havoc amongst families. We don't need to go through this because it is Thanksgiving and we're going to really be much, much late for family dinners, but, Mr. Speaker, the situation in this country is not good. That's why we had that reshuffle. Because people is hurting today that I've never seen. And as I said this morning, on the 22nd, it was 39 years that I was elected and at least 10 years before that of being involved. And I've never seen families so shaken up, so distraught. I mean, many different things, social problems, a serious issue in the country. But financially, you not got money to pay your bills, you not got money to buy food and people, that's what's happening. And worst of all, if you had a little house and you losing it. And worst of all, if you can get a little house, but you can't get it, not able to get it, in a country, a developing state as we supposed to be, small developing state is a big word they will use, all that, all that we are doing, and yet we have these kind of situations. 1.2 billion-dollar budget, or whatever it is, over a billion dollars, for this little place. And yet, we face these situations and we got people scared to death, Mr. Speaker, of saying anything about social development or helping people because they have to run with these people who don't want to see, they don't want to see us get ahead. Mr. Speaker, one of the things that made me move on the 9th, that was a month that I had given them notice, was a young lady, young professional, working in the NRA, was married, they broke up, they had a waiver first, but she lost the house. They had to take the sale of the house to pay the mortgage. So she had nothing but three children, living in her grandparents' one room. She was smart enough, because she's intelligent, to get a mortgage, but had to get a waiver. Was approved for the mortgage, dependent on the waiver, got some of it. They couldn't give her all of it. She borrowed the money for her down payment, they couldn't give her all of it. That premier, that upset one, couldn't give her the money, wouldn't do so. Because rules say this, rules say that, when all the while, the Minister of Finance has a discretion, I know, that's in the law, I was Minister of Finance too, you have a discretion. And if you, how can you claim she's a one-time, she's the first-time Caymanian to get a waiver? Because she had one already? That's a different situation altogether. We fix it though. She get it now. But I tell you what, it is some of these things that I am saying, if we can't fix these things, I'm no use of me and you talking, then perhaps, I don't know if I want to be part of this. Maybe my 40 years is the time to give it up. Especially when you come to these situations, because I come from that side of the street, I know what need is. Now, just want, yeah, you want things too. I know what need is. I know what it is to need a house, how to plant a house. I know what it is to sleep on the floor. I know what it is to live in my grandmother's house and grow up there, good times, but oh, I know how bad it was, sisters and brothers, rainy weather and leaking roofs. I know all of that. That's why I fight the way I fight, because I've been through it and I have nothing to hide. You ride the back of the tiger, what you do? You reap the whirlwind. And I tell you all in here, change your mind on some of these things, don't let these people, you're talking about being new and you're young, well, you are, but don't let these people ride on it, the pieces believing that you can't do some of what we are doing here. It has to be done, it has to be done. So while this situation is at hand and if we can alleviate one burden, it's a Godsend. How pity! You don't know, none of us know what our children will come to. I have five grandchildren, one six years old in a few days, the other one just finished college. We have grandchildren, we don't know what's going to happen here. We have to set the right background and the right foundation because there are people that don't care about these kind of social issues in our country. So I am very pleased, and I better not ram along if we want to get out of here, but it's a Godsend. No, pensions is not a savings account. No, it's not a savings account, but it's their savings, it's the people's savings that they can utilize now. So it's a Godsend. Now, there was, nothing in the matter, in the proposal, is a situation I raised in the debate and afterwards, during the discussion, I think in the committee room, which the Minister and his team, his ministry team and the UPM governance accepted for an amendment which the Minister will move. I guess he's got permission, but I hope he gets it, if he hasn't gotten it yet. And that is the matter for the outstanding strata fees, Mr. Speaker. In that matter, it is important as the outstanding mortgage because some people have not been able to pay their strata fees. So you allow them to get the money to pay off the mortgage, but they end up with $20,000, $10,000, $15,000. And you can say, well, on strata fee, outstanding, the bank, and it's going to check you on that, they're going to check you on it. So we have to make provision in this scenario that we don't depend on the banks. You can't talk to them when you raise your mortgage up to what it is today. Talk to them if you think that they can say it's not our money, it's other people's money. That's what they will tell you, we can't do nothing about it. But we have to though, we have to. And this is one way of stopping them from telling that person, no, because we put it in there, in the bill, do the amendment, put it in the bill, and then the person will be able to qualify if necessary. But my position is, you pay off the mortgage, oh, we've done a good thing, but you left them with this humongous bill that they can't handle anyway. So we have to do that. And thank God that the Minister have have an amendment, him and his team, to let them be able to pay that outstanding amount. So, Mr. Speaker, I will end there, accept to say that once this got to the public, I started to get calls on my community, my community chat and my Westby West enhancement chat and others, from civil servants. Is this about civil service? Can we do anything? And I had to write back to them, no, this is not about the civil service, this is a private sector pension fund, but civil servants, I think, many of them would know that, the governor controls the pensions for civil servants. And some of them are rank and file, I call them, they hurting too. They hurting too. And they can petition the governor to withdraw from theirs in their situation. And I would hope that they would do that. That's why I pushed, talked about the cola and the new premier has taken that on board and will deal with those issues come the budget and come for Christmas, a whole. We have to do these things. These are not good times, while they are the best of times, as I said, they're the worst of times for our people. That's why we're taking issues to deal with such things as the customs amount on entering back into Cayman. It will go far, these are the things we have to do. Caymanians want immediate gratification, they're not really talking about long term, not right now. They're not stupid, they know we have to plan long term. But when your car can't start, when your house is leaking, when you can't buy food, it's instant gratification that our people are looking for. And we, as the elected body with 1. something billion dollars in revenue, have to find the wherewithal to deal with these issues. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Member from Westby West. Does any other member wish to speak? The Member from Westby North.
Mr. Speaker, I too, I'm happy to see this finally reach here. I've seen the Minister for Tourism get ready to stand and speak and I'm hoping he'll remind the House that 2017 or 18 around then, he proposed it, we supported then, I'm glad to see it back, there's so much support. The people need this, and I do hope, especially for single parents, that we look real careful where we can help our people. Thank you, and I will be supporting the bill.
Thank you, Member from Westby North. Does any other member wish to speak? The Minister for Tourism and Transport.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It don't tend to be very long, as some members have already started to tap into areas of where I want to highlight. But I am very grateful to the Member from Westby North for highlighting that I brought much of what was in this motion, in this bill, in a motion on the 28th of June 2018, some five years ago, in a few months. And though much of the arguments and debate as to the reasons to allow it were flushed out then, they're still relevant today, if not more so, with the high interest rates. So I am very happy today, Mr. Speaker, to see finally this is being done in legislation. I think it is only right to highlight a former member of parliament, Mr. Elio Solomon, and his efforts with the now Minister for taking the first initial steps to allow a vehicle and an avenue for withdrawals for Caymanians to purchase homes and to pay off mortgages, as many people have forgotten the foundation of the principal areas of this bill and where it stemmed from. Mr. Speaker, though we have heard all the arguments as to the reasons why, I don't think they need to be doubled down again, I think it's important that we talk about the other component of persons who will not be able to have the benefit of these amendments to the bill. And those are the hard-working civil servants and public servants that will be excluded in this new amendments. Madam Speaker, I, like many members in our government and many members in the opposition, have heard the calls of all the civil servants and public servants who currently pay their contributions, pay their contributions to the Public Service Pension Board. And, Mr. Speaker, though we hear those calls, we find ourselves in a difficult place where we don't know how to address or to fix or to fix those concerns when they see their fellow Caymanians having an opportunity within law to withdraw from their pension, sometimes being considered as savings. But it's important to understand the structure of governance in our country and who is responsible for what area and what lies within the power of the members of this parliament. Mr. Speaker, the Public Service Pension Law falls under the structure of the portfolio of the civil service, which doesn't constitutionally fall under any elected member. It technically falls, Mr. Speaker, under the governor's office. And a piece of legislation that governs the pensions for the civil servants and those SAGCs that contribute their pensions to the Public Service Pension Board is governed under the Public Service Pension Law. And ultimately, Mr. Speaker, if there was to be a proposed change that would allow an avenue for withdrawal, it would have to come from the the head of the civil service. Now, Mr. Speaker, I am very mindful of the constitutional responsibilities I have and Section 55. And I dare not want to overstep the responsibility the Honorable Premier has laid in my hands. But it's important that the civil servants understand that their representatives hear their cries and understand that they too are being affected by the high interest rates. And they wish they could have had the opportunity to withdraw from their pensions. But, Mr. Speaker, conversations about that opportunity has been had. And indications have been, it's not something that would be supported. And I say that because the civil servants and those who will not get the opportunity need to hear it and not feel that they are being cheated by the people that they voted into office for not giving them the opportunity. You see, Mr. Speaker, something I know that you are very familiar with, but most who listen to this Honorable House may not always fully understand. We will bring bills to this Honorable House that will eventually become law. But there is a final stage before it becomes law. It has to be assented to by the King's representative, better known as Her Excellency, the governor. And if the head of the civil service is not in support of such suggestion to change the Public Service Pension Law to allow civil servants to withdraw from their pensions, even if we as legislators bring the necessary changes to that law because this parliament is in charge of all legislation. We are the people's representatives to make the laws on their behalf, but we are still in overseas territory, which has to be finalized by the King's representative. Now, Mr. Speaker, I had an opportunity to look at the portfolio of the civil service and their mandate. And I just want to put things in context as to for the public to understand where our power lies and it doesn't lie. It says, this is a copy of what they are responsible. And it says what we do. The portfolio of the civil service provides policy advice and support to, it says His Excellency because they haven't updated the website, but it should say Her Excellency, the Governor and the Deputy Governor in overseeing the operations of the civil service. The portfolio also provides strategic HR advice and operational HR functions of the public authorities. The portfolio of the civil service has a central role in the diagnosis, design and implementation and evaluation of the public sector's reform within the Cayman Islands and on occasion in other overseas territories. Mr. Speaker, and just a further note on their website, it says, POCs is comprised of 12 department sections and units. The portfolio is also has oversight of one statutory authority, namely the Cayman Islands Public Service Pension Board. Now, I only read that into the Honorable House of Record for them, for the public to understand that the full control of the Public Service Pension Board is fully in control of the civil service through the constitutional power being given to the Deputy Governor, which is actually the power of Her Excellency herself. So I want to further support the position put forward by the Honorable Member from West Bay West in saying that if they too feel as a Caymanian that they should have the opportunity as we are giving now today to those Caymanians who are not a part of the Public Service Pension Board, but of the private pensions, they would have to petition Her Excellency. Because sometimes we in this Honorable House do get the blame for some things we don't have control over. And by all means, Mr. Speaker, I am not trying to put any wedges between the elected arm and the civil service arm. We both work hand in hand together to run the country. But sometimes things we, the elected arm, get blamed for and the average person in the public may not understand. We don't have the power. To give you an example, Mr. Speaker, many times it is perceived that we are allowed to give jobs that are within the civil service or within the SAGCs to members of the public. And I many times have to say I cannot get involved in HR related matters. I can lose my constitutional responsibilities. But the public believes that once you're elected, you can say, I can hire this person in a department, I can hire this person in authority or a government owned company. We can't do that. Madam Speaker, matter of fact, we can lose by our code of conduct in Cabinet. We can lose our position as Cabinet Ministers. And it could be considered as corruption and interference. Madam Speaker, quite like in that example, it's quite similar in this example with respect to civil servants who give their hard contributions to the Public Service Pension Board and probably have good amounts of monies within their pension plan. But there's only so much we can do within the Honorable House because of the construct of our relationship with the UK. We're not independent. We don't have the ultimate say. And, Madam Speaker, I'll wrap it up there to say that though we may not be able to give the civil servants and those in the SAGCs a good news in respect to being able to withdraw and take away some of that added pressure of the increased interest rates and pay off some back payments. This administration, this government, this new group, the United People's Movement, do have some things that we think will substitute that. And I will leave that to the Honorable Premier to make her announcements later today, which I hope that the civil servants and the rest of the public servants of the government owned companies and statutory authorities should be happy about. But I think it's important that I clarify that for all those who are within the sound of my voice. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Minister for Tourism and Transport. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? The Honorable Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I shall be brief. Uh, Mr. Speaker, happy to be able to speak to this bill that's before this Honorable Parliament this afternoon with regard to amendments to the National Pensions Act. Mr. Speaker, we've been reminded today as the origin of these amendments that they arose out of a private member's motion, which really wasn't that long ago, if I remember correctly. And so it really pleases me that the private member's motion, first off, was debated and issues ventilated quite well inside this parliament. And it was supported by every member of this Honorable House. And here we are again, just a few months later, we see we have the amendments and we're debating now passing them into law. To me, Mr. Speaker, it shows just what can be accomplished sometimes. When, if we want of it better, we have described in it, when all the stars line up, we get it done, we can get it done really quickly. And I'm grateful for that. Mr. Speaker, from what I see within this bill, it does reflect the will of this House in terms of the amendments that we had asked for in the private member's motion. One of the things that does particularly, I am particularly grateful to see and hear are the repayment terms. That you're not going, people are not going to be able to just take money out of their pensions and that's the end of the story. It's got to be paid back. And that is absolutely important. Otherwise, all you are doing is creating another problem without the payback provisions. The public might not like it, but the reality is this is their pension fund. And if you're taking out what you're saving for the future, spend it today, they could still end up knocking on the doors of the NAU at some point in their retirement, uh, seeking assistance. So that in itself is a terribly important clause that's in this bill, I think, really will be helpful as well. Mr. Speaker, we in the opposition, the official opposition, we fully support this bill as we did when we supported the private member's motion when it came to the floor of this House. And we look forward to seeing it being made available and signed into law so that the public and those who qualify can begin to access and take advantage of the provisions. I have to admit, Mr. Speaker, that since the private member's motion was passed, I've had calls too. I've had calls from the private sector people looking, when is this going to happen? I've also had calls as well from members of the civil service asking, will these amendments apply to us? And I've had to indicate to them, no, that it really is only for the private sector pension plans and nothing to do with the public service one. So I know that there is a demand for these provisions and that there are people who will avail themselves of this opportunity to be able to access their pension funds for very limited purposes. Let's be clear about that. And so it's not a free for all. But I do think, reflect upon what has been said and would encourage those who are in a position within the civil service to take a look at it because I know that there are those within the civil service that could benefit from something like this. And I know there may be challenges there, but I do believe within my heart, where there's a will, there is a way. And we can find it. So, Mr. Speaker, I will conclude my debate on the bill and say on behalf of the opposition that we support this wholeheartedly and look forward to voting in the affirmative when the time is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Leader of the Opposition. The Minister for Health and Wellness. And I believe Home Affairs now.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. And I crave your indulgence before I make a short contribution on this bill that has been tabled to offer my congratulations on your appointment as Speaker of Parliament. It's almost funny in the hall of halls there. I, it was an honor for me to say, remember you my elected representative. And your reply was, remember you mine. But in all honesty, sir, I look forward to working with you, especially as we move forward together recognizing the importance of unity. Recognizing the importance of unity and cooperation. And it is my prayer and hope that we may seek to foster greater collaboration across party lines. Understanding your role is one of neutrality. This could possibly involve initiating more dialogues, forums and working groups to address national issues through bipartisan efforts. But I am very hopeful in coming off of the Leader of the Opposition's contribution, pretty much it aligns into bipartisanship as we get on with the work of our people in the best interest of our country. But once again, Mr. Speaker, congratulations to you. I know that a lot of persons on this floor, my colleagues, have actually given words in relation to this National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023. And it has been ventilated quite enough. And I am, just to prepare some context of the history and the process in getting this bill on this floor, quite coincidentally, on what we know as American Thanksgiving, which is celebrated right here today, Thanksgiving. If my memory serves me well, Ministry brought the CP pretty much to caucus and Cabinet, it came to Cabinet from July 12th to September 12th. And then it, not long, it went for legal drafting to the Ministry to review, to prepare a Cabinet paper and then come back for approval. I deliberately did that, Mr. Speaker, so that you can see that it's, there is process and these things, these things take time. But here we are today, given the timeline, and we're able to vote in support of something that can have a huge impact on the lives of our Caymanians. Mr. Speaker, the pain of the cost of living crisis that we in these islands have been experiencing, that has worsened since the onset of COVID, is well known. And it has been felt by everyone in our society. As parliamentarians, we hear, we see the struggles every day. We get the calls, we get the texts, we get, we get those persons visiting our homes, visiting our offices. We know what it's like. People that are struggling on a daily basis to make ends meet, trying to secure jobs, fear of where they're working clothes down, to keep the lights on, to keep food in their homes. No longer being able to see those fridge, fridges stocked. We know that for years, a large percentage of Caymanians have had hard choices to make every month. It appears we're doing that pretty much on a norm now every month. Which bill to pay? Which one we could put off for a few more weeks? which one we could put off for a few more weeks. We know that the single largest expense that Caymanians face right now is the cost of housing. I don't even know if we can say we're lucky, if you were in the position to say you're lucky to be paying a mortgage. I have online banking, and I cringe every time I go on that landing page, and I see the balance of my mortgage, and I know where I started from, and where I am today, paying that for years. And there's one little thing that the banks have in there called compound interest. I don't even think a lot of our people even understand what's happening. Sometimes those fees, as they call this, compound interest, is even more than your monthly payment that you have to make. We cannot be in an elected position, Mr. Speaker, to have this opportunity, to make one step through this vehicle, for right now to be able to have more funds in Caymanians' hands, so that disposable income gives a relief, so that they can honestly now either catch up with their house insurance, be able to catch back up and have some normalcy in maintaining those utility bills. We see it every day, Mr. Speaker. We need to be in these positions and understand that we're not this dictatorship style. That's not who we are. But if we're going to live in our society together, we have to be able to come to an even playing field, meet around the table with these financial institutions, and have the real talks. Because it's two things are going to happen. You're going to have more people that are displaced and not be able to have their homes. It may be okay to say, yeah, we're going to foreclose on them, and you're going to have somebody else come in and buy it off of them. But what is that going to do to our pristine, our island, that it appears everybody from around the globe wants to come here and be with us, and our Caymanians are struggling? We are elected to do our jobs. We are elected to do exactly what we're doing here today. We should be in the position that we can go down in history and say, in the time where the world was in turmoil of trying to keep afloat, that we did something to make a difference. And this is just one of those avenues. The amendment proposed in this bill are primarily designed, as I alluded to earlier on, to Caymanians to use their pension funds to help with the housing cost, but especially for those to lower their monthly payments. And I'm hoping that we can do more PR on this, where the vote I'm seeing and I'm feeling will go today, that this will be supported, that those persons who can make these balloon payments to their existing mortgage if they're not paying them off, that they can make that directed to their principal and understand what that means. But it's a reciprocal exercise, because those same financial institutions, as earlier alluded to by the Minister from Botten Town West, need to be able to work with those same customers, who I am sure have seen the change in patterns of persons who have probably never been late in their life, persons who have never probably asked for a refinance, persons who have never asked for a delayed payment. I am sure those same financial institutions have seen some changes in the behaviors of their very own customers. But what some of those same financial institutions are not possibly seeing are the risk and sacrifices that some homeowners are making every month to make sure that they can make that monthly payment, but they're doing and going without light some months unless they're assisted by their MPs or families, or ask for extensions through these utility providers, or they go in many times, Mr. Speaker, without food. We have to do something to help our people, and this is the first step of bridging that gap, breaking down silos, and take collective responsibility if we're moving forward collectively as a jurisdiction. And it's going to all take everyone to hold hands together, and we have an opportunity today to make that change. Any action that we as a government can take to help Caymanians lower their monthly mortgage payments, or help landlords keep rent lower for renters, is something we must be willing to take. But there is one caution, Mr. Speaker, as leaders, as representatives of the people. We should not encourage or facilitate Caymanians to take what little they have saved for their retirement, and allow them to spend it as well, willy-nilly. I am appealing to every landlord who is hearing the sound of my voice today, that once this facility is made available, that you do the right thing and pass some of these savings on to your tenants. Because at the end of the day, we are all in this together. And I am hoping and praying that they will see it in their good conscience, Mr. Speaker, to really, really assist. Whether it is five or 10% reduction, every little bit helps to lower the cost of living across the board. And I offer my support for this bill as long as it is focused on reducing monthly expenses or helping Caymanians purchase property. It would be responsible of us to allow pension funds to be withdrawn for anything other than to helping pay off, like I said, or lower bank mortgages, payments, or even to get on that ownership ladder, owning your first property. In closing, Mr. Speaker, all of us in this honourable House have a responsibility to carefully examine where we are with pensions as a country, both in the private sector and the public sector. And I see that's one thing both sides agree on today. And stop kicking this proverbial can down the road. Our population, Mr. Speaker, is getting older. We're seeing the stats, we're hearing it every day. And the average person who worked their entire life in the private sector is going to find it nearly impossible to live off of their pensions. The civil service pension is not properly funded, and I can say that with confidence, Mr. Speaker, as it was said here last year in this honourable House by the Financial Secretary. It's a reality. So if we are truly putting people first, Mr. Speaker, then we need to deal with the problems of today, and look ahead two, three, five years, and start to prepare for the eventualities as well. We are responsible to help fix this, and I hope we will take that responsibility seriously. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, Honourable Minister of Health, Wellness and Home Affairs. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call upon the Minister of Labour to exercise his right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to first thank all members who gave contribution on this National Pension Amendment Bill 2023. I note some of the members' comments in terms of Botten Town West, in terms of how much salary it takes to retire, 10 years to save one year. Madam Speaker, um, Mr. Speaker, uh, I also, I didn't hear anyone mention, or maybe I missed it, in terms of SAGCs with private pensions. There seems to have been some confusion as to who will be able to and who will not be able to. And I think the confusion comes in remembering what we did during the pandemic, and the provisions at that time was that persons who were not out of a job could not pull from their pensions, even if they were SAGCs and had private pensions. But in this instance, we want to be very clear that SAGCs and members who are working with SAGCs and who are contributing to their pension funds will be able to take advantage of this amendment, uh, Bill 2023, as long as it's a private pension. Mr. Speaker, I'm liking this new construct already, in terms of the UPM. We are a government of keeping promises, and I remember the honourable member from Botten Town West asking and begging, almost trying to pivot his vote. If this was brought back this week, consider having a special meeting to bring this back this week. And it's here, and I'm proud of the camaraderie of the 19 cohort, and I'm pleased to say that, as I thought, and as I grew up knowing, that all 19 of us in here can always get into one room and disagree and not be disagreeable. Mr. Speaker, I know what it means to not be able to afford the down payment. I know what it means sitting in front of that lone officer, you and your loved ones sitting down there crying because they tell you you don't have enough down payment. I know what that feels like. I went through that. And I also, the members from West Bay West, in terms of talking about sleeping on the floor. I don't know how many years you did it for. Member from West Bay West, but I can tell you, I did it for many years, over 10 years. I used to have some serious back pains growing up. And I remember in those days when it was cold, we didn't have thick blankets, there were little sheets, and the draft coming through the holes in the flooring. I know what that feels like. And that's the reason why I put myself up for office, to ensure that Cayman benefits Caymanians. Too many times, it seems, and you hear the people talk about it all the time, people coming here and living better than them. We need to turn that in the next direction. We need to start clawing back on that, Mr. Speaker, and trying to find a way for Caymanians to feel like they're achieving in their own land. This is not being done for political gain. This is about addressing our people's pain. Retirement, Mr. Speaker, is an endgame goal for most investors. Yes, we get it. No one wants to end up broke in their retirement, and very few want to live on a pittance while struggling through what should be your golden years. I don't want to scare anyone, Mr. Speaker, but we need to be honest with our people, so they can have an idea of what's going on, what is expected of them. But to retire, as a member from Botten Town West, somewhat alluded to earlier, you need 10 to 12 times your annual income at retirement age. If you retire at 67, for instance, and your income is a grand $150,000 per year, per annum, then you should have $1.5 to $1.8 million set aside for retirement. Yes. Mr. Speaker, these are tough times, and as the member from Prospect said earlier, talking about the banks. I think all banks, including CIDB, should hold off all foreclosures. Offer refinancing arrangements, forbearance arrangements, agreements for those who can't access, for those who can't get that agreement, then you'll have to access your pension fund. I thank the member from Botten Town West and the member from West Bay West for having the vision to bring this motion forward, and also previously the member from Georgetown Mr. Speaker, it is my intention to bring further amendments and seek your approval to waive the two-day notice. Members of this honourable House, I thank you so much for your contribution. And all I've heard, it appears that everyone is in support, though cautious. I want to thank again the ministry team for all the hard work they have done, also the Director of the LP, Sir Bernard. Mr. Speaker, this was a decision that was not taken lightly. Members of caucus mulled this about. We knew the effects that can possibly happen, and I implore on all members, let's get together, come up with ideas, doesn't matter from which side of how we protect or make provisions for what we know will be a delta in persons, especially persons who are over 50, and their pensions when they retire. We need to, we are elected, they depend on us to come up with ideas to help them. And I'm saying to you, we need to explore getting that fund, an additional fund for retirement, because we're going to have a lot of embarrassment and high cost. because we're going to have a lot of embarrassment and high cost in need of a FIA and EUs if we don't get this right. Mr. Speaker, I thank you for this time. God bless these Cayman Islands.
Thank you, Honourable Minister for Labour. The question is that a bill shortly entitled National Pensions Amendment, Bill 2023, be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill has been read a second time. Madam Premier, may I invite you to move Suspension of Standing Order 10-2 in order that the business of the House may continue beyond the moment of interruption?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that standing order 10-2 be hereby suspended to allow the House to continue beyond our interruption in order to complete the business of today.
The question is that standing order 10-2 be suspended in order that the business of the House may continue beyond the moment of interruption. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Standing order 10-2 is suspended.
Committee on Bills.
The House will now go into a committee. Please be seated. The House is now in committee. With the leave of the House, may I assume that as usual, we should authorize the Honourable Attorney General to correct minor errors and such the like in these bills? Would the clerk please state the bill and read the clauses?
Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023. Clause one, short title and commencement. Clause two, interpretation. Clause three, meaning of legal person.
Are there any questions on these clauses, one to three? If not, I will put the question. The question is that clauses one to three stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses one to three stand part of the bill.
Clause four, meaning of beneficial owner.
Are there any questions with respect to clause four? The Minister for Financial Services?
Mr. Chair, in accordance with the provisions of Standing Order fifty, fifty, fifty-two, one and two, I, the Honourable Andre Yvans Deputy Premier and Minister responsible for financial services, give notice to move the following amendments to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill on clause four.
Minister, may I ask if all members have copies of the proposed amendments?
As far as I know, Mr. Chair.
And for the record, I waived the usual two-day notice earlier for the record. Please proceed, Minister.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the bill be amended in clause four as follows. A, in subclause one C, by deleting the words, quote, "including as a senior managing official" where there is no individual who exerts control pursuant to paragraph A or B, end quote. And B, in clause, in subclause three, by deleting paragraph B and substituting the following paragraph, quote, "B, the trustees of a trust meet one of the specified conditions under subsection one in relation to the legal person," end quote. And C, by inserting after subclause three, the following subclause, quote, "Three A, where there is no individual who meets the definition of a beneficial owner pursuant to subsection one or three, the senior managing official shall be identified as the contact person," end quote.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does any member wish to speak thereto? If not, I ask all those in favor of the amendment to say aye. Those against, no.
Aye.
The question is that the amendment start, stand part of the clause. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. The amendment stands part of the clause. Minister, do you wish to speak to the clause as amended?
Just very briefly for the record, Mr. Chair. Under the latest promulgation of the FATF standards, a senior managing official is not considered to be a beneficial owner in his or her own right and should not be included in the definition, hence the deletion. And on the other hand, the amendment is to clarify that trusts are not in and of themselves as an entity, a beneficial owner, but rather it's the trustees as the so-called operators that are the beneficial owner.
Thank you, Minister. The question is that clause four as amended stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clause four as amended stands part of the bill.
Clause five, competent authority.
Are there any questions with respect to clause five? If not, all those in favor, I will put the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clause five stands part of the bill.
Clause six, duty of legal persons to identify beneficial owners, et cetera.
I have received notice of a committed stage amendment with respect to clause six. Would the Honourable Minister wish to move the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In accordance with Standing Order fifty-two, one and two, I, the Honourable Andre Yvans Deputy Premier Minister responsible for financial services, would give a notice to amend the bill in clause six as follows. A, by deleting the clause heading and substituting the following clause heading, quote, "duty of legal persons to identify registrable beneficial owners, comma, et cetera," end quote. B, by deleting subclause two and substituting the following subclause, quote, "A legal person under section twelve-one-e shall identify, A, every individual that is a beneficial owner of the legal person, B, every reportable legal entity, and C, the trustees of a trust referred to in section four-three." By deleting subclause three and substituting the following subclause, quote, "A legal person under section twelve-one-e shall provide in writing to its corporate services provider the current valid, the current and valid required particulars of their registrable beneficial owner in respect of that legal person," end quote. And by renumbering subclause four as subclause five and inserting before subclause five as renumbered the following subclause, quote, "A legal person under section twelve-one-e shall inform its corporate services provider in writing as soon as the required particulars have been confirmed," end quote.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does any member wish to speak thereto? If no member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment stand part of the clause. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The amendment stands part of the clause. Does anyone wish to speak on the clause as amended? Honourable Minister?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just by way of short explanation, the amendment is to clarify in the heading, which is missing now, the word registrable beneficial owner to be sure that we're in keeping the consistency of the drafting, that that's what's being referred to in clause six. And as said on the prior amendment, to confirm that trustees can be identified as beneficial owners. And lastly, in relation to subclauses four and five, it's just a recommendation by legislative drafting that rearranging the clause would make it easier for read, for reading and interpretation.
Does any other member wish to speak to the amended clause? If not, the question is that clause six as amended stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clause six as amended stands part of the bill.
Clause seven, registrable beneficial owner. Sorry. Clause eight, duty to give notice to registrable beneficial owners. Clause nine, duty of registrable beneficial owners to supply information. Clause ten, exemption.
The question is that clauses seven to ten stand part of the bill. Are there any questions with respect to clauses seven to ten? If not, I will put the question. The question is that clauses six to ten. Sorry, clauses seven to ten stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses seven to ten stand part of the bill.
Clause eleven, corporate services providers to review particulars.
I have received notice of committed stage amendments from the Honourable Minister who has conduct of the bill. Does the Honourable Minister wish to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to move, move the amendment formally. In accordance with the provision of Standing Orders, Standing Order fifty-two, one and two, I, the Honourable Andre Yvans Deputy Premier and Minister responsible for financial services, move that the bill be amended in clause eleven-one-A by deleting the words, quote, "under section six-one," end quote, and substituting the words, quote, "under section six," end quote.
Does the Minister wish to speak to the amendment?
Very briefly, Mr. Chair. It's just a clarification to ensure that in this clause, it's all of subsection, of all of section six is being referred to and referenced and not just section six-one.
Does any member wish to speak to the amendment to clause eleven? If no member wishes... If no member wishes to speak, I will put the question. The question is that the amendment stand part of the clause. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The amendment stands part of the clause.
Clause 12, required particulars and written confirmation required for categories of legal persons.
I invite the Honorable Minister to move the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with Standing Order 52-1, 2, I, the Honorable Andre E. Banks, Deputy Premier and Minister Responsible for Financial Services, move that the bill be amended in Clause 12 by deleting Subclause 10.
Amendment has been duly moved. Does the Minister wish to speak their turn?
Yes, Mr. Chair. By way of short explanation, this is a result of consultation between industry professionals and the ministry that there is a concept at the moment that where there has been no beneficial owner identified, that a filing consists of a nil return, that there is no beneficial owner. But the professionals, the industry professionals and the ministry have said that there must be some human being that organized and had charge of the entity. So the concept of nil return should not exist and there must be some entity that is incorporated and completed in the return as having charge as the beneficial owner.
Thank you, Minister. Does any other member wish to speak to the amendment? If not, I will put the clause. I will put the question. The question is that Clause 11 as amended stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clause 11 as amended stands part of the bill. Sorry, Clause 12 as amended stands part of the bill.
Clause 13, duty to establish and maintain register. Clause 14, duty to keep register current. Clause 15, duty to notify relevant changes. Clause 16, retention on the register. Clause 17, power of the Grand Court to rectify beneficial ownership register.
The question is that Clauses 13 to 17 stand part of the bill. Does any member? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 13 to 17 stand part of the bill.
Clause 18, consequences of failing to disclose beneficial ownership. Clause 19, issue of restrictions notice by corporate service provider. Clause 20, effect of registrations notice. Clause, effect, if, sorry, Clause 20, effect of restrictions notice. Clause 21, applications to the Grand Court.
The question is that Clauses 18 to 21 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 18 to 21 stand part of the bill.
Clause 22, access to beneficial ownership information. Clause 23, no disclosure of information.
The question is that Clauses, Clauses 22 and 23 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 22 and 23 do stand part of the bill.
Clause 24, competent authority or the registrar may request information. Clause 25, duty of the corporate services provider to forward correspondence. Clause 26, administrative fines. Clause 27, criminal penalties.
The question is that Clauses 24 to 27 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 24 to 27 do stand part of the bill.
Clause 28, competent authority may issue guidance. Clause 29, registrar's rulemaking power.
The question is that Clauses 28 and 29 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 28 and 29 do stand part of the bill. I have received notice-
Clause 30, regulations.
I have received notice from the Honorable Minister of a proposed amendment to Clause 30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provision of Standing Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Andre E. Banks, Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services, move that the bill be amended in Clause 30 as follows: A, by inserting after paragraph F the following paragraph, quote, brackets, FA, prescribing fees for the applications under paragraph F, including fees for the filing of documents in support of an application, for access to the information on the search platform under Section 22.3, and for the provision of administrative services by the competent authority or the registrar. In paragraph, Roman numeral little i, little 1, by deleting the word registrar and substituting the words competent authority. And in paragraph N, by deleting the word registrar and substituting the words competent authority.
The amendment, the amendment has been duly moved. Does Honorable Minister wish to speak their turn?
Very briefly, Mr. Chair. The first, the first moved amendment is just to confirm that Cabinet, but for the avoidance of doubt, has the power to prescribe fees in relation to those matters. And it's after consultation, it was deemed that for this particular clause, the more suitable authority is the competent authority rather than the registrar.
Thank you, Honorable Minister. Does any other member wish to speak to the amendment? If no member, other member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment stand part of the clause. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The amendment stands part of the clause. The question is that the clause as amended do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clause, Clause 30 as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause 31, amendments by order.
I have received notice from the Honorable Minister of a proposed amendment to Clause 31. Minister?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provision of Standing Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Andre E. Banks, Deputy Premier and Minister Responsible for Financial Services, move that the bill be amended in Clause 31B by deleting the words adding and deleting and substituting the words add and delete respectively.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does Honorable Minister wish to speak to it?
Very briefly, that it's a minor typographical error that's being corrected.
Thank you, Honorable Minister. Does any other member wish to speak to the amendment? If not, I will put the question that the clause as amended do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clause 31 as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause 32, protection of civil servants from liability. Clause 33, conflict. Clause 34, agreements regarding sharing of information. Clause 35, savings and transitional.
The question is that Clauses 32 to 35 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 32 to 35 do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to provide for the consolidation and enhancement of the beneficial ownership legislative framework in the islands and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023. Clause 1, short title and commencement. Clause 2, amendment of Section 13 of the Banks and Trust Companies Act 2021 revision, obligations of auditors. Clause 3, amendment of Section 18, additional powers of authority. Clause 4, amendment of Section 22, power of search.
The question is that Clauses 1 to 4 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 1 to 4 do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the Banks and Trust Companies Act 2021 revision to include references to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Companies Amendment Bill 2023. Clause 1, short title and commencement. Clause 2, repeal of Section 80d of the Companies Act 2023 revision exempt- Sorry. Clause 2, repeal of Section 80d of the Companies Act 2023 revision, exempt from Part 17a. Clause 3, amendment of Section 156a, striking off for failure to pay fine. Clause 4, repeal parts, repeal of Parts 17a and 17b, beneficial ownership registers, administrative fines. Clause 5, amendment of Section 282, amendment of schedules. Clause 6, repeal of schedules 6 and 7, countries or territories that have entered, et cetera, administrative fines.
The question is that Clauses 1 to 6 do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 1 to 6 do stand part of the Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
A bill for an act to amend the Companies Act 2023 revision to remove provisions relating to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no? The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Companies Management Amendment Number 2 Bill 2023. Clause 1, short title and commencement. Clause 2, amendment of Section 3 of the Companies Management Act 2021 revision, definition of business of company management. Clause 3, amendment of Section 18, additional powers of authority. Clause 4, amendment of Section 19, power of search.
The question is that Clauses 1 to 4 do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 1 to 4 do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the Companies Management Act 2021 revision to include references to the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Act 2023 and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023. Clause 1, short title and commencement. Clause 2, amendment of Section 3 of the Foundation Companies Act 2017, application of acts.
The question is that Clauses 1 and 2 do form part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no? The ayes have it. Clauses 1 and 2 do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the Foundation Companies Act 2017 to provide for the application of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Act 2023 to a foundation company- of the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Act 2023 to a foundation company under the Foundation Companies Act 2017 and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question is, it now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023. Clause one, short title and commencement. Clause two, amendment of section twenty of the Insurance Act 2010, duties of auditor. Clause three, amendment of section twenty-one, insurance managers. Clause four, amendment of section twenty-four, powers of authority.
The question is that clauses one to four do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses one to four do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the Insurance Act 2010 to include references to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023, 2023. Clause one, short title and commencement. Clause two, repeal of parts ten A and twelve of the Limited Liability Companies Act 2023 revision, administrative fines, beneficial ownership registers preliminary. Clause three, repeal of the schedule of the Limited Liability Companies Act 2023, administrative fines.
The question is that clauses one to three do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses one to three do stand part of the bill. The question now is, oh, sorry.
A bill for an act to amend the Limited Liability Companies Act 2023 revision to repeal provisions relating to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023. Clause one, short title and commencement. Clause two, amendment of section thirty-one of the Limited Liability Partnership Act 2023 revision, strike off. Clause three, repeal of parts eight, nine, and the schedule, beneficial ownership registers, administrative fines, etc.
The question is that clauses one to three do form part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses one to three do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the Limited Liability Partnership Act 2023 revision to repeal, to repeal provisions relating to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023. Clause one, short title and commencement. Clause two, amendment of section thirty-one of the Mutual Funds Act 2021 revision, powers of authority in respect of licensed mutual fund administrators. Clause three, amendment of section thirty-three, powers of authority etc. to search in accordance with search warrant. Clause four, amendment of section thirty-five, obligation of auditors.
The question is that clauses one to four do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses one to four do stand part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the Mutual Funds Act 2021 revision to include references to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House.
Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023. Clause one, short title and commencement. Clause two, amendment of section twenty-five of the Virtual Asset Service Providers Act 2022 revision, enforcement powers of the authority. Clause three, amendment of section thirty-two, duty of auditor. Clause four, amendment of section thirty-three, entry and search of premises.
The question is that clauses one to four do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clauses one to four do stand part of the bill.
Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023. Sorry. A bill for an act to amend the Virtual Asset Service Providers Act 2022 revision to update references relating to the beneficial ownership regime and for incidental and connected purposes.
The question is that the title do stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The title stands part of the bill. The question now is that the bill be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House. Honorable members, I wish to take a short suspension of about fifteen minutes. If members could not wander too far away, we can, I believe, complete the business of the House fairly swiftly thereafter. The House, the committee is suspended for fifteen minutes.
The Comerical Resilience
National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023 Clause One: Short Title and Commencement
The question is, that Clause One do stand part of the bill? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clause One Clause One does stand part of the bill.
Clause Two, Amendment of Section 47, Contribution Rate.
I have received notice from honorable minister of the proposed amendment of Clause Two. I invite the minister to move the amendment.
Mr. Chair, in accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister Responsible for Border Control and Labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023, that the bill be amended by deleting Clause Two and substituting the following clauses. Amendment of Section Three of the National Pensions Act 2012 revision. Definition: The National Pension Act 2012 revisions in this act referred to as the Principal Act is amended in Section Three by inserting after the definition of the word minister the following definition: Mortgage has the same meaning assigned to the word charge under the Registered Land Act 2018 revision.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does the minister wish to speak thereto?
No.
Does any other member wish to speak? If no other member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment stand part of the clause. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The amendment stands part of the clause. The question is that the clause as amended do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. I am grateful to the Honorable Attorney General for pointing out that we we need to include two A in the amendment as part of the amendment to Clause Two. So if I might ask the minister to start again and with the the bill be amended by deleting Clause Two all the way down.
The purposes?
The purposes and thank you, we do it all over again so it's clear.
Mr. Chair, for completeness, for completeness, let me start over in accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister Responsible for Border Control and Labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pension Amendment Bill 2023, that the bill be amended by deleting Clause Two and substituting the following clauses: Amendment of Section Three of the National Pensions Act 2012 revision. Definitions: The National Pensions Act 2012 revision is the act referred to as the Principal Act is amended in Section Three by inserting after the definition of the word minister the following definition: Mortgage has the same meaning assigned to the word charge under the Registered Land Act 2018 revision. The amendment of Section 47, Contribution Rate, two A, the Principal Act is amended in Section 47-10 by repealing paragraph C and substituting the following paragraph: For housing purposes including: One, the purchase of construction of the member's dwelling house; Two, the purchase of residential land for the member; Three, providing a reduction payment A, on an existing residential mortgage and if applicable, any arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property or B, on a residential land loan or Four, payment of the outstanding balance of the member's mortgage in full and if applicable, any arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property but excluding the payment of rent or similar purposes and.
The amendment is duly moved. Does the minister wish to speak thereto?
No need to, Mr. Chair.
Does any other member wish to speak? If no other member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment do stand part of the clause? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The amendment does stand plant, does stand part of the clause. The question now is that the amended clause do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause does stand part of the bill. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause Three, Amendment of Part 7A, Withdrawal of pensions to purchase or construct dwelling unit, purchase residential land, or pay off an existing mortgage in the islands.
I have received notice of proposed amendment to Clause Three of the bill. I would invite the honorable minister responsible to move the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister Responsible for Border Control and Labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pension Amendment Bill 2023, that the bill be amended by deleting Clause Three and substituting the following clause: Repeal and substitution of part heading for Part 7A, withdrawal of pension funds to purchase or construct dwelling unit, purchase residential land or pay off an existing mortgage in the islands. The Principal Act is amended in Part 7A by repealing the part heading and substituting the following part heading: Part 7A, withdrawal of pension funds to purchase and or construct dwelling unit, purchase residential land, provide reduction payment on residential land, loan or existing mortgage and if applicable, arrears and strata fees or pay off existing mortgage and if applicable, arrears and the strata fees in the islands.
Amendment has been duly moved. Does honorable minister wish to speak thereto?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Does any other member wish to speak? If no other member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment stand part of the clause? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The amendment stands part of the clause. The question now is that the clause do stand part of the bill? Clause as amended do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause Four, Amendment of Section 52A, Definitions in Part 7A.
I have received notice that the honorable minister proposes an amendment to Clause Four of the bill. I invite honorable minister to move the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister Responsible for Border Control and Labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pension Amendment Bill 2023, that the bill be amended in Clause Four as follows: A, in paragraph B by deleting sub-paragraph three and substituting the following sub-paragraph: By inserting after the definition of the words non-current homeowner the following definition: Reduction payment means a payment towards A, a residential mortgage and if and if applicable, arrears and strata fees and related to the mortgage property or B, a residential land loan and and B, by deleting paragraph C and substituting the following paragraph C by inserting after subsection one as renumbered the following subsection: Two, for the purposes of the definition of the words reduction payment, payment towards a residential mortgage and if applicable, arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property or payments towards a residential land loan applies to A, in respect of a residential mortgage or residential land loan which in foreclosure both the principal and interest arrears on the mortgage or land loan; B, in respect of a residential mortgage or residential land loan which is in good standing with the financing financial institution that granted it, the principal and the mortgage or land loan or C, in respect of a residential mortgage where there are arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property. One, where the residential mortgage is in foreclosure, the principal and interest arrears on the mortgage and the arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property; and two, where the residential mortgage is in good standing with the financial institution that granted it, the principal and the mortgage and the arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does the does the mover wish to speak to it?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Does any other member wish to speak? If not, the question is that the amendment do form part of the clause? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The question now is that the clause as amended do form part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The clause as amended does, the ayes have it. The clause as amended does farm, does form part of the bill.
Clause Five, Amendment of Section 52B, Withdrawal of amount from pension account as a deposit.
I have received notice that the honorable minister proposes an amendment to Clause Five. I invite him to now move it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of the Stand in Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister for Border Control and Labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023, that the bill be amended in Clause Five as follows: A, in paragraph C; Two, and propose paragraph D by deleting the words 52BA ten, 52C nine and substituting the words 52BA twelve, 52C nine and B in paragraph H by deleting sub-paragraph two and substituting the following sub-paragraph: Two, by deleting the words attain in the normal age of pension entitlement and substituting the words repayment, repaying the withdrawal amount in full and that the bill be amend amended by deleting Clause Six and substituting.
No, 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 minister, you're going too far.
Sorry, sorry.
You're going too far. This this amendment is limited to Clause Five. The amendment has been duly moved. Does the minister wish to speak thereto?
Not at this time.
Does any other member wish to speak? If not, the question is that the bill be, the clause be amended, that Clause Five, that the amendment stands part of the clause? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Amendment stands part of the clause. The question now is that the clause, that is Clause Five, stands part, as amended, stands part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause as amended stands part of the bill. I have received notice. Sorry, sorry, clerk.
Clause Six, Insertion of Section 52B-A, Withdrawal from pension account to provide reduction payment on existing mortgage or residential land loan.
I have received notice that the honorable minister proposes an amendment to Clause Six and I invite him now to move it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52-1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister for Border Control and Labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023, that the bill be amended by deleting Clause Six and substituting the following clause: Insertion of Section 52B-A, Withdrawal from pension account to provide reduction payment on existing mortgage and if applicable, arrears and strata fees or residential land loan. The Principal Act is amended by inserting after Section 56B and the following section: Withdrawal of amount from pension account to provide reduction payment on an existing mortgage and if applicable, arrears and strata fees or residential land loan. notwithstanding Section 55 and 56 but subject to the remaining provisions of this section, a person who is a Caymanian may withdraw from the person's account in a pension plan an amount not exceeding fifty thousand dollars required to provide a reduction payment on: A, an existing mortgage on no more than two dwelling units in the islands; B, where there's an existing mortgage and on no more than two dwelling units in the islands, the existing mortgage and any arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property or C, a residential land loan in the islands; Two, a person who wishes to withdraw an amount required to provide a reduction payment pursuant to the subsection one, brackets, shall subject to subsection three, in brackets, make an application to the relevant administrator in the form prescribed in the schedule; Three, an application under subsection two, in brackets, shall be accompanied. three, an application under subsection two, in brackets, shall be accompanied by A, evidence that the person is a Caymanian; B, evidence that the applicant has legal title to the respective dwelling unit or residential land; C, if applicable, a declaration in the form prescribed in part B of the schedule that the dwelling unit referred to in paragraph B, in brackets, is intended to serve as the primary residence of the applicant; D, if applicable, a copy of the letter issued by or on behalf of the relevant corporation addressed to the person making the application, whether or not solely to that person, certifying the matter set out in section six, four, in brackets, of the Strata Titles Registration Act twenty thirteen revision; E, a copy of the letter, of a, a copy of a letter issued by the financial institution holding the mortgage or residential land loan, addressed to the person making the application, whether or not solely to that person, showing approval in principle for providing a reduction payment on one, the existing mortgage in respect of no more than two dwelling units and the amount to be paid; two, the existing mortgage in respect of no more than two dwelling units, any arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property and the amount to be paid; or, three, a residential land loan and the amount to be paid. F, where the person has made a previous withdrawal under this part evidence that the member has complied with sections fifty-two B, bracket ten, fifty-two B A, bracket twelve, fifty-two C, bracket nine, and fifty-two D, bracket one. If, if applicable, and G, if required by the administrator, an application fee not exceeding fifty dollars. Four, the letter referred to in this, in subsection three, brackets. E, brackets, one bracket and three bracket, shall specify A, the name of each person that applied for the withdrawal; B, the relevant block and parcel number of the relevant property to which the withdrawal relates; and C, the specific sources of funding for the reduction payment, including each amount and specific pension plan from which the respective withdrawals will be taken. Five, the letter referred in to, the letter referred to in subsection three, bracket, E bracket two, bracket, shall A, specify the matter set out in subsection four, bracket; B, provide confirmation that the arrears and strata fees is for the member's primary residence, which shall contain no more than two dwelling units; and C, have annexed to it a copy of the letter referred to in subsection three, bracket, D bracket. Six, two or more persons who are Caymanians, and who are approved in principle by a financial institution, may, in accordance with this section, withdraw the amount required from their respective accounts in a pension plan up to the maximum of fifty thousand dollars each toward, towards providing a reduction payment on A, an existing mortgage on the respective person's primary residence; B, where there is an existing mortgage on the respective person's primary residence and arrears and strata fees in respect of the primary residence, both the mortgage and arrears and strata fees; or C, a residential land loan. Seven, where a person withdraws an amount from the person's account in a pension plan pursuant to subsection one, bracket, B bracket, the person shall pay the part of the amount allocated to paying off the arrears and strata fees through a financial institution. Eight, where an application is made under subsection two, bracket, the administrator, A, shall within sixty days of the application be sub, being submitted, issue the amount required to be paid towards the existing mortgage, and if applicable, the arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property or residential land loan in the form of a check payable to the relevant financial institution, and deliver it to the applicant if satisfied that the applicant is entitled under subsection one, brackets, to withdraw the amount applied for; or B, may if not satisfied that all the requirements under subsection three, bracket, have been correctly provided by the applicant, refuse the application and shall within seven days of the applicant, application being submitted, give reasons for the refusal to the applicant by le, by, by letter in writing. Nine, admit, admit, an administrator who contrav, contravenes subsection eight, bracket, commits an offense and is liable under summary conviction to a fine of twenty thousand dollars to imprisonment for a term of two years, or to both, and if the offense is a continuing one, to a fine of one thousand dollars for every day or part of a day during which the offense has continued. Ten, an administrator shall provide the director monthly A, a list of all persons who have withdrawn amounts from their respective accounts in a pension plan under this section stating each amount withdrawn; B, a list of all persons who applied for withdrawal under this section; C, a list of all persons that are repaying withdrawn amounts in their respective accounts in a pension plan under this section; C, a copy of each letter to the person stating the reason for refusal under subsection eight, brackets, B bracket; D, in the form approved by the director, a report with respect to each person who has withdrawn an amount from the person's account in a pension plan under this section; and E, a list of all persons that are repaying withdrawn amounts in their respective accounts in a pension plan under this section. Eleven, an administrator who contravenes subsection ten, bracket, commits an offense and is liable under summary conviction to a fine of twenty thousand dollars or to imprisonment for a term of two years or to both. Twelve, sub, subject to subsection thirteen, bracket, where, before repaying the withdrawal amount in full, a person sells a dwelling unit in respect of which a reduction payment has been applied through the use of an amount withdrawn. Pursuant to this section, the person shall, upon completion of the sale, return the amount withdrawn or ten percent of the fair market value of the dwelling unit, whichever is greater, back to the person's pension plan account. Thirteen, the payments received by the administrator under section fifty-two D shall be deducted from the amount that the member is required to repay under subsection twelve, bracket. Fourteen, a person who contravenes subsection twelve, bracket, commits an offense and is liable on summary conviction to a fine of twenty thousand dollars or to imprisonment for a term of two years or to both. Fifteen, for the purposes of this subsection, for the purposes of this section, a person may apply for a reduction payment on existing mortgage, only where the mortgage applies to the primary residence of the person, and the residence contain no more than two dwelling units.
Minister Seymour, you sure you reached the end? The amendment has been duly moved. Does the minister wish to speak further to it?
No, I'd rather pause.
The question is that the amendment stand part of the clause. Those in favor? Please say aye. Those against no? The ayes have it. The amendment does stand part of the clause. The question now is that the clause as amended do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye. Those against no? The ayes have it. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause seven, amendment of section fifty-two C, withdrawal of amount from pension amount to pay off an existing mortgage.
I have received notice of the, a proposed amendment to clause seven from the Honorable Minister. I invite the Minister now to move the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order fifty-two, one and two, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister responsible for border control and labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pensions Amendment Bill twenty-twenty-three. The bill be amended by deleting clause seven and substituting the following clause. Amendment of section fifty-two C, withdrawal of amount from pension account to pay off an existing mortgage. Seven, the principal arc is amended in section fifty-two C as follows. A, in the section heading by inserting after the word mortgage, the words and the arrears and strata fees. B, by repealing subsection one, bracket, and substituting the following subsection. One, notwithstanding section fifty-five and fifty-six, but subject to the remaining provisions of this section, a person who is a Caymanian may withdraw from the person's account in a pension plan an amount not exceeding one hundred thousand dollars required to. A, pay off an existing mortgage on a dwelling unit in the islands so that the dwelling unit is free from any encumbrance; or B, where there is an existing mortgage on a dwelling unit in the islands, pay off the existing mortgage and any arrears and strata fees relating to the mortgage property. C, in subsection two, bracket, by deleting the word subsection one, bracket, and substituting the word subsection one, bracket, A bracket, or pay off an existing mortgage and pay off arrears and the strata fees related to the mortgage property pursuant to subsection one, bracket, B bracket. D, in subsection three, bracket, as follows. One, in paragraph B, bracket, by deleting the word and; two, by inserting after paragraph B, bracket, the following paragraph. B A bracket, if applicable, a copy of a letter issued by or on behalf of the relevant corporation addressed to the person making the application, whether or not solely to that person, certifying the matter set out in section six, four, bracket, of the Strata Titles Registration Act twenty thirteen revision. Three, by repealing paragraph C, bracket, and substituting the following paragraphs. C, a copy of a letter issued by the financial institution holding the mortgage addressed to the person making the application, whether or not solely to that person, showing approval in principle. One, for paying off the existing mortgage and the amount to be paid off; or, two, for paying off the existing mortgage and any arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property and the amount to be paid off. D, where the person has made a previous withdrawal under this part evidence that the member has complied with sections fifty-two B ten, bracket, fifty-two B A twelve, bracket, fifty-two C nine, bracket, and fifty-two D one, bracket. If applicable, and E, if required by the administrator, an application fee not exceeding fifty dollars. E, by inserting after subsection three, bracket, the following subsections. Three A, the letter referred to in subsection three, bracket, C bracket, one bracket, shall specify A, the name of each person that applied for the withdrawal; B, the relevant block and parcel number for the relevant property to be, to which the withdrawal relates; C, the specific sources of funding for the purchase, including each amount and specific pension plan from which the prospective withdrawal shall, will be taken; and D, confirmation that the mortgage is for the member's primary residence, which shall contain no more than two dwelling units. Three B, the letter referred to in subsection three, bracket, C bracket, two, bracket, shall C, specify the matter set out in subsection three A, bracket; D, provide confirmation that the arrears and strata fees is for the member's primary residence, which shall contain no more than two dwelling units; and C, have annexed to it a copy of the letter referred to in subsection three, bracket, B A bracket. F, by repealing subsection four, bracket, and substituting the following subsections. Four, two or more persons who are Caymanian who are approved in principle by a financial institution, may, in accordance with this section, withdraw the amount required from their respective accounts in a pension plan up to the maximum of one hundred thousand dollars each towards A, paying off an existing mortgage on the respective person's primary residence; or B, where there is an existing mortgage on the respective person's primary residence and the arrears and strata fees in respect of the primary residence, paying off both the mortgage and the arrears and strata fees. Four A, where a person withdraws an amount from the person's account in a pension plan pursuant to the subsection one, bracket, B bracket, the person shall pay the part of the amount allocated to the paying off the arrears and the strata fees through a financial institution. G, in subsection five, bracket, A bracket, as follows. One, by deleting the words forty-five days and substituting the words sixty days; and, two, by inserting after the words mortgage, the words and, if applicable, the arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property. H, in subsection seven, bracket, by inserting after paragraph B, bracket, the following paragraph. B A bracket, a, a list of all persons that are repaying withdrawn amounts in their respective accounts in a pension plan under this section. I, in subsection nine, bracket, as follows. By deleting the words where and substituting the words subject to subsection nine A bracket, where; two, by deleting the word acquired and substituting the words paid off; and, three, by deleting the words "a teen in the normal age of pension entitlement" and substituting the words "repaying the withdrawal amount in full". J, by inserting after subsection nine, the following subsection. Nine A, the payments received by a pension plan administrator under section fifty-two D shall be deducted from the amount that the number that the member is required to repay under subsection nine, bracket. K, by repealing subsection eleven, bracket, and substituting the following subsection. Eleven, in this section, corporation has the meaning assigned by the section two of the Strata Titles Registration Act twenty thirteen revision; and, encumbrance has the meaning assigned to that expression under section two of the Registration Land Act nineteen ninety-six revision; and L, by inserting after section eleven, bracket, the following subsection. Twelve, bracket, a dwelling unit under subsection one, bracket, refers to a dwelling unit which serves as the primary place of residence for the person making withdrawal under that section.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does any member wish to speak to it? If no member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment do form part of the clause. Those in favor, please say aye. Those against no? The ayes have it. Amendment does form part of the clause. The question now is that the clause do form part, do stand part. The clause as amended do stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye. Those against no? The ayes have it. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause 8, amendment of Section 52(c), additional contributions.
I have received notice from the Honorable Minister of his proposal to amend clause 8. I now ask the Minister, invite the Minister, to move the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Section of Stand in Order 52, 1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister responsible for border control and labor, give notice to move the following amendments of the National Pension Amendment Bill 2023: That the bill be amended in clause 8 in the proposed Section 52(c)(1) bracket by deleting the words 52(b)(6) bracket, A bracket, and substituting the words 52(b)(8) bracket, A bracket.
The amendment has been duly moved. Does any member wish to speak to the amendment? If not, the question is that the amendment do form part of the clause? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause as amended does form, does stand part of the bill. All those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause 9, amendment of Section 52e, total amount withdrawn from more than one pension plan not exceeding $35,000.
I have received notice from the Honorable Minister of his intention to move an amendment to clause 9. I now invite him to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52, 1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister responsible for border control and labor, give notice to move the following amendment to the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023: That the bill be amended in clause 9 by deleting the paragraph A bracket and substituting the following paragraph: A) by repealing this section heading and substituting the following section heading: Total amount withdrawn from more than one pension plan not to exceed $50,000 except under Section 52(c).
The amendment has been duly moved. Does any member wish to speak thereto? If no member wishes to speak, the question is that clause 9, that the amendment does stand part of of the clause, clause 9. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The amendment does stand part of the clause. The question now is that clause 9 as amended does stand part of the bill. Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause 10, insertion of Sections 78a, 78b, 78c, and 78d, remuneration and immunity of members of the board, appointment and functions of committees, meetings of the board, duty of confidentiality.
The question is that clause 10 do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clause 10 stands part of the bill.
Clause 11, repeal and substitution of schedule form.
I have received notice from the Honorable Minister of his intention to propose an amendment to clause 11. I now invite him to move that amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52, 1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister responsible for border control and labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023: That the bill be amended in clause 11 and propose schedule in the form as follows: A) in the heading by inserting after the word "mortgage", wherever it appears the words, the words and, if applicable, arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property; B) in the table under the heading A4, withdrawal requests in the fourth column by deleting the words "for pay off", "for pay off of mortgage", and substituting the words "to pay off mortgage", and, if applicable, and arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property; C) under the heading A5, type of withdrawal as follows: One, by inserting after the words "reduction payment on existing mortgage", the words "and, if applicable, arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property", and Two, by inserting after the words "pay off an existing mortgage", and the words "and, if applicable, arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property"; D) under the heading A6, total amount of withdrawal required by deleting the words "for pay off of an existing mortgage", and substituting the words "for paying off of an existing mortgage", and, if applicable, arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property; E, under the heading A9, this application is accompanied by the following documents as follows: One, by inserting after the words "to pay off an existing mortgage" on a dwelling unit, the words "and, if applicable, to pay off arrears and the strata fees related to the mortgage property", and Two, by inserting after the words "letter from financial institution addressed to the applicant", the following: "letter from corporation addressed to the applicant", and Three, by deleting the words 52(b)(10), and substituting the words 52(b)(12), 52(c)(9). F) in Part C by inserting after the words "pay off", the words "pay off", the words "and, if applicable, make a reduction payment towards or pay off arrears and strata fees in respect of", and G) in Part D by inserting after the words "mortgage", the words "and, if applicable, make a reduction payment towards or pay off arrears and strata fees related to the mortgage property", 10, that the bill be amended in long title by
The amendment has been moved. Does any member wish to speak thereto? If no member wishes to speak, the question is that the amendment do form part of the clause? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The amendment does form part of the clause, does stand part of the clause. The question now is that the clause as amended do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The clause as amended does stand part of the bill.
Clause 12, transitional.
The question is that clause 12 do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Clause 5 stands part of the bill. Clause 12 stands part of the bill.
A bill for an act to amend the National Pensions Act 2012 revision to allow Caymanians to withdraw from their pension plans to pay off, to pay the, sorry, I'm sorry. A bill for an act to amend the National Pensions Act 2012 revision to allow Caymanians to withdraw from their pension plans to pay towards a mortgage or residential land loan to increase the maximum amount allowed for withdrawals from pension plans to change the additional contributions required as a result of the withdrawal to amend the structure and governance of the National Pensions Board and for incidental and connected purposes.
I have received notice from the Honorable Minister responsible who proposes an amendment to the long title. May I now invite the Minister to move the amendment?
No pun intended. Mr. Chair, in accordance with the provisions of Stand in Order 52, 1 and 2, I, the Honorable Dwayne Seymour, the Minister responsible for border control and labor, give notice to move the following amendments to the National Pension Amendment Bill 2023: That the bill be amended in the long title by inserting after the words "residential land loan", the words, or, if applicable, "to make a reduction payment towards or pay off arrears and strata fees".
The amendment has been duly moved. Does any member wish to speak thereto?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the Honorable Minister for these changes. A lot of them are actually pretty good.
Member, we need to get the thing through first.
Yeah, no, so I'm talking, so I'm talking to the changes, overall changes. So, and we went through several of them.
Are you saying you simply want to thank the Minister?
No, 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 I'm talking about the difference, I'm going to talk about the changes. But since they were all pretty much related. So rather than I want to go through each change, I just want to say what I want to say now.
Which changes?
No, talk all the amendments that he did.
No, no, the vote has already been taken.
Oh, okay, sorry, I never talked about the next one, sorry.
No, no, no. We can't start all over again. The question, the question, the, I've lost my train of thought. The question is that the amendment to the long title do stand, do stand part of the clause, not the clause, do stand part of the title? Those, do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The question now is that the long title as amended do stand part of the bill? Those in favor, please say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The long title as amended does stand part of the bill. The question now is that the bill as amended be reported to the House. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The bill will accordingly be reported to the House. That concludes the business of this committee. The House will now resume.
Report on bills. Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023.
The Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister for Financial Services.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed with amendments.
The bill is accordingly set down for third reading.
Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill is accordingly set down for third reading.
Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Companies Amendment Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is accordingly set down for third reading. Minister for Financial, sorry, getting ahead of myself.
Companies Amendment, Companies Management Amendment Number 2 Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Companies Management Amendment Number 2 Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
Insurance Amendment Number 2 Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Insurance Amendment Number 2 Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled "The Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023" was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled the Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023 was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023 was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled the Virtual Assets, Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 was considered by a committee of the whole House and passed without amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading.
National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Labor.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Mr. Speaker. I'm pleased to report that a bill shortly entitled National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023 was considered by a committee of the whole House and the bill was passed with ten amendments.
The bill has been duly reported and is set down for third reading. Madam Premier, is it the intention of your government to proceed with the third, the third reading today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
If so, could I invite you to move the suspension of the relevant standing order, which is Standing Order forty-seven, enable more than, more than two readings of a bill to be conducted in the course of one day?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we suspend Standing Order forty-seven in order to enable the reading of more than two readings at any one sitting. I so move.
The question is that Standing Order forty-seven be suspended in order to allow more than two readings of the bills to be conducted in one sitting. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Accordingly, Standing Order forty-seven is suspended.
Third read, third readings. Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023.
Beneficial Ownership Transp- Madam, Madam Clark, would you call the bills third readings? The Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 has been read a third time. Perhaps we should start over.
Benefici-, third readings. Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 be read a third time and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 is passed.
Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled the Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be read a third time and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023 has been duly passed.
Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Companies Amendment Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
The Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Companies Management Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Financial Services and Deputy Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Virtual Asset Services, Service Provider, start over. Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023.
The Honorable Minister for Labor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to move that a bill shortly entitled the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed.
The question is that a bill shortly entitled the National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023 be given a third reading and passed. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023 is accordingly duly passed.
Motions. Government motion number three of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Development and Planning Act 2021 revision, Development and Planning Amendment Regulations 2023 to be moved by the Honorable Minister of Planning, Agriculture, Housing, Infrastructure, Transport, and Development.
The Honorable Minister of Planning, Agriculture, Housing, Infrastructure, Transport, and Development.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I beg to move government motion number three of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Development and Planning Act 2021 revision, Development and Planning Amendment Regulation 2023, whereas section forty-two, one, section forty-two, one of the Development and Planning Act twenty-two revision provides that cabinet may make regulations for the better of carrying out and giving efforts that affect up to the act and whereas section forty-two, three of the act provides that no regulation shall be made unless a draft of the regulations has been laid before the Cayman Islands Parliament and a resolution approving the draft is passed by the Cayman Islands Parliament. And whereas the Draft Development Planning Amendment Regulations 2023 were laid on the table of the parliament, we therefore resolve that the Draft Development and Planning Amendment Regulation 2023 be approved by the Cayman Islands Parliament in accordance with section forty-two, three of the Development and Planning Act twenty twenty-one revision.
The motion has been duly moved. Does the Minister wish to speak there too?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have laid before this honorable House the Development and Planning Amendment Regulation 2023. Mr. Speaker, the purpose of this amendment is to promote the use of rooftop spaces on multi-story buildings in the commercial and hotel and tourism zones. Mr. Speaker, we believe that this enhances the efficiency of the site by allowing ancillary features that may normally take up the site of other areas of the building to now be undertaken at rooftop level. For instance, Mr. Speaker, features such as pools, restaurants, which may normally be placed on the site and sometimes near the water or beach can now be placed on roofs while maintaining their attraction and appeal. We know that in the areas of land and views are premium, imagine the appeal of watching Cayman's world famous sunsets on the roof of your hotel while dining. I certainly feel that there will be some breathtaking moments for our locals and tourists to cherish. Mr. Speaker, such flexibility will allow to promote greater building sustainability as the site itself can now be further utilized for vegetation and greenery and indeed the roof can also be an integral part of the green buildings. It is important to note that the roof in existing states can be used for mechanical and electrical rooms or equipment and this space must be complement of these existing uses. It should not be seen as another story but rather defined as a space that is occupable but not livable. That is, Mr. Speaker, it cannot be used for additional bedrooms, suites, penthouses, but rather for meeting spaces, gyms, and other ancillary uses. Mr. Speaker, this change was done in consultation with the industry and the stakeholders as we recognize the importance of the development sector and its virtual role to the Cayman's economy. This will allow development to continue to stay at the, more at the forefront and the modern efficiency buildings. But also, Mr. Speaker, it is a direction whereas it gives developers the opportunity to, as we talked about before, moving our pools, moving our restaurants to be able to utilize that rooftop space. But now also gives us the opportunity for when we come to, of talking about moving our setbacks whereas we look at in the further coming months, another amendment to the planning laws will be coming whereas we'll be looking at the beach setbacks. So this is actually a start in that phase of moving that direction to give the opportunity for anyone that is building on the beaches or wherever to allow more beach space or to have to take it up for pools or a restaurant. Mr. Speaker, I now seek the approval of this honorable House and passing of this Planning and Development Amendment Regulation 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Minister of Planning. Does any other member wish to speak? Honorable Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Very briefly. We have read the regulations and the paper that is before us, Mr. Speaker, and we support the amendments as they are presented by the Minister this afternoon. Thank you, sir.
Does any other member wish to speak? The Minister for Transport and Tourism, Tourism and Transport.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just rise to give full support to the Minister from the perspective of tourism. When this motion was brought to caucus for discussion, seeking feedback from my ministry, we're well happy as it will allow us to have a more improved product that's more in line with much of our competition. So we are welcoming to the planning stages of approval so that those who are in the development stages or future plans can amend to give those experiences that you heard the Honorable Minister speak about. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Minister for Tourism. Can I just confirm that you are no longer responsible for transport? I keep calling you Minister for Transport. Ports. Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? If not, then I call on the Honorable Minister for Planning to exercise his right of reply.
Mr. Speaker, I just want to thank my colleagues and the honorable members of this House for their full support in this planning amendment. I thank you all.
The question is, be it therefore resolved that the Draft Development and Planning Amendment Regulations 2023 be approved by the Cayman Islands Parliament in accordance with Section 42.3 of the Development and Planning Act 2021 Revision. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Government Motion Number Three of 2023/2024 is duly passed. Honorable Members, I believe that that is the end of the order paper which you currently have, but there is an addendum order paper which we... The premier has discussed with me to deal with consequential matter resulting from the change in imposition of various members of this House, myself included.
Statements by honorable ministers and members of the Cabinet.
I have given permission to the Honorable Premier to make a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in the brief days since the forming of the UPM government, I am delighted to say that the government has worked cohesively and indeed rapidly to address longstanding issues that enjoy widespread support and in some cases unanimous support across both sides of the aisle here in Parliament. Moreover, Mr. Speaker, the policy initiatives which are being brought forward will directly and positively impact the lives of Caymanian families. This week, the UPM administration is making inroads to deliver financial relief to three diverse groups across the Cayman Islands society who have been long awaiting decisions on key policies. I am indeed happy, Mr. Speaker, to say that even in this first meeting, my government is prepared to consider these matters that assist people within both the public and private sectors. Within our civil service, who is charged with delivering the government's policy priorities, the following policies are being rapidly delivered. One, the first policy to come to fruition are the amendments to the National Pensions Act in order to bring urgent relief to families who are struggling to maintain home ownership and in some cases to even access home ownership to the rapid rise in interest rates in recent months. In response, Mr. Speaker, my colleague, the Honorable Minister for Border Control and Labor, introduced and was passed just in the last few moments, a bill to amend the National Pensions Act which increased the maximum amount that can be withdrawn from the private sector pension plans for home purchase or construction, mortgage reduction, mortgage payoff, and strata fees, as was seen in the various numerous amendments. This law, Mr. Speaker, applies only to the private sector as public sector pensions are structured differently and civil service terms and conditions are in fact reserved responsibilities for the governor and deputy governor by virtue of Section 55 of the Constitution. Notwithstanding this, Mr. Speaker, my government knows the plight of many public servants and in particular retired public servants who faithfully served for many years but whose pension is below the level of subsistence provided through the indigent care. As such, Mr. Speaker, the second policy that the government is actively considering are amendments to the Public Service Exgration Uplift Regulations. Once finalized, Mr. Speaker, the policy will come into effect in December 2023 and will provide relief to public service pensioners who worked for ten years or more by increasing their minimum pension to twelve fifty per month. This is an increase of three hundred dollars per month or thirty-two percent over the current minimum pension guarantee of nine fifty per month. Mr. Speaker, for those long-serving public service pensioners whose pension income is less than twelve fifty per month, this one decision alone will bring much-needed relief allowing them to better cope with affording the bare necessities. I am indeed relieved, Mr. Speaker, that not only is this policy decision-making being taken quickly by the UPM government, but it will also be implemented quickly as well. The Public Service Pension Board has confirmed that eligible pensioners will receive their first payment in December ahead of the Christmas season. The third major policy, Mr. Speaker, that impacts many Caymanians is a policy to award a one-off payment to the civil service in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars per employee. Again, this payment will be processed as a one-time payment in the month of December. Mr. Speaker, I know that there will be some who will criticize a payment to the civil service. To these critics, I say, and none, I believe, inside this hallowed chambers, the truth is that we owe our civil service a tremendous debt of gratitude. Civil servants, you see, Mr. Speaker, not only are the deliver arm of every government policy and program, but in the current fiscal period of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, efficiencies have been achieved by the civil service in the areas of personnel costs alone. And they have created the financial wherewithal to fund other government initiatives that have benefited the wider Cayman Islands community. Mr. Speaker, in personnel calls alone, the civil service forecasted to achieve a total of sixty-six million dollars in savings during the current fiscal period, which is broken down as accounts for approximately forty million in HR savings in twenty twenty-two and a forecasted savings of approximately twenty-six millions for this year. These savings have been reinvested to support working families across the Cayman Islands, Mr. Speaker, helping to pay for programs such as electricity rebate, free school lunches, and other measures introduced by the government in the current fiscal period to help alleviate the cost of living. By approving the one-time payment, Mr. Speaker, of fifteen hundred dollars, the government is allowing the civil service to retain approximately ten percent of the HR savings it has generated. I believe, Mr. Speaker, that this approach is a sound one on two fronts. It rewards the contributions of our civil service and it incentivizes continued efficiencies. I know that our colleagues across the wider public sector will ask questions about their eligibility. To them, I would say, Mr. Speaker, that in principle, we have no objection. But it's important to note that this outcome has been funded by efficiencies and not the result of government needed to approve any new funding and that this is in lieu of other performance initiatives at this time. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, the Liptus test is in savings. If they can be found and new funds are required, we have no objections. As you have heard, Mr. Speaker, there are no less than three measures which my government is actively delivering. These decisions allow the country to now move forward with certainty about what can be accomplished within our existing resources. We are no longer talking about helping our people. As has been demonstrated even here today, Mr. Speaker, this government is putting our words into action. I want to thank my colleagues from this side of the floor and across the floor, and your good self, Mr. Speaker, for indulging, and I'm sure if you are across the floor, supporting through your tacit support on these very significant matters when they have been previously debated in Parliament as well as by implication today. In particular, Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the new members of the UPM government for making these policies a reality and the civil service for delivering them to help Caymanian families in both the public and private sectors, both who are working and who are retired. We may not be able to do all things, Mr. Speaker, but we are committed with the help of Almighty God to being good stewards and doing what we can while we can, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Premier.
Government Business Motions. Government Motion Number Four of 2023/2024, Change in Membership of the Standing Business Committee, to be moved by the Honorable Premier.
Honorable Premier.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I wish to move Government Motion Number Four of 2023/2024, which would, if passed, support a change in the membership of the Standing Business Committee.
Honorable Premier.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the motion reads as follows. Whereas in accordance with the provision of Standing Order 79, this House appointed a standing business committee charged with deciding the order of business of the House, and in particular, A, to consider the business papers of the House, B, to decide and inform the clerk the order in which private members' motions are to be debated on, C, to decide and to inform the clerk two clear days before a question day, the questions to be put down for reply on the order paper for that question day, D, to provide a ready means of consultation between members who are not members of the Cabinet and the premier, the leader of the opposition, the speaker, and the clerk, E, to select a member to read prayers on each day of the meeting of the House other than the state opening meeting, F, to inform the clerk the order in which bills shall be set down upon the order papers, and whereas, following the resignation of the Honorable G. Wayne Panton from the committee by letter dated the twenty-second of November 2023, the election of Honorable Sir Alden McLaughlin as Speaker of Parliament, the current membership of the Standing Business Committee comprises of A, Honorable Juliana Y. O'Connor Connolly Premier, B, Honorable Andre M. Ebanks Deputy Premier, D, Honorable Roy M. MacTaggart Leader of the Opposition, and E, Honorable Kenneth V. Bryan Government Minister. And whereas, it is desirous to appoint the Honorable Johani S. J. Ebanks MP and the Honorable Joseph X. Hugh as members of the committee. And be it therefore resolved that the Honorable Johani Ebanks MP and Honorable Joseph X. Hugh be and are hereby elected as members of the Standing Business Committee. I so move, Mr. Speaker, and have elaborated on the contents of the motion.
Motion has been duly moved. Does Honorable Premier wish to speak further to it?
Very briefly, Mr. Speaker, the motion in itself is self-explanatory by way of the resignation letter by the former premier and by your due election this morning to the office of Speaker of this honorable parliament. It left two vacancies, one from the government side, one from the opposition. The opposition has duly submitted Honorable Joseph X. Hugh, and the government, by consensus, has approved Honorable Johani Ebanks. And we would wish to move forward with the business committee as we intend to bring the budget at a date to be announced and distributed to the clerk tomorrow. May I please you, sir?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Does any other member wish to speak? All habits die hard, Honorable Premier. Does any other member wish to speak? If no other member wishes to speak, I will put the question. Be it therefore... Madam Premier, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In normal circumstances, I would have said no. I accept a stand-in time members for their tacit support, but it would be remiss of me if I did not, with your discretion, express to you, which I have done in private, how very pleased I am to see that the resetting of a new journey of democracy within this honorable hallowed chamber commenced this morning with your elevation from the back bench and now complete your political role as far as occupying the various positions. Perhaps what's left is a seat on the Court Appeal or Grand Court. Our governor general, who knows? But suffice to say, I think based on the feedback and the full support of my colleagues, it was unanimous, and we thank the leader of the opposition for their cooperation, the independent member from Bonnington West. And I believe that as the former premier in BVI said when we were negotiating in UK, and it was Don Premier at the time, he started off with a very introductory, flattering remark that when he was flying from New York and he saw a beautiful dawn as he approached London, he knew that he would have safe landing with her name being Dawn. Well, your name isn't Dawn, but you have in fact dawned many hallways, both in all three aspects, executive, judiciary, and in Parliament. We wish for you the very, very smooth sailing. I can't promise you, Mr. Speaker, it would be as efficient or as effective or as smooth as today, but I know with you having been on both sides, you would appreciate the adversarial nature of the parliamentary democracy. And as you've always said in many, many speeches, there may be some that love the Cayman Islands as good as you, but not more than you. And I think there are a number of things that...
And I think there are a number of things that caused me to know within my own mind that we had direct selection, that I could be bold-faced enough to say, no, we're not going to the outside, and not that there were many very competent persons from the outside, but charity begins at home. And I felt that, like you, there weren't enough of musical chairs, and that music needed to stop. And I believe that democracy is formidable in the minds of those who have not wrapped their minds around it, but it's such an efficient chariot to take us into the next century. You've been in these chambers for a long, long time. We rode many battles together and had many victories on opposite sides and on the same side. I know you through your founding crew road because of my friend Debbie and Liz through medical reasons, and I'm safe to say that regardless of politics, I personally and politically convey the utmost respect for your integrity, your intellectual capacity, and your ability for partiality when necessary, but impartiality when necessary as well. I believe that this House and the ninth Speaker will soar to new heights because you have come from the pedigree where heights by great men reach and kept, were not attained by sudden flight, but they while their companions slept were toiling upward through the night. And in fact, you easily encapsulated that poem that I learned many, many years ago at Cayman High School. And I believe that Cayman is now at a juncture that unity has to be the operative word. If we're going to save, to preserve, to conserve what our forefathers and mothers did, yes, there's room for politics, an election is on the horizon as it were, but until then, we were put here as trustees of the people, and they need us now more than ever before. And so through you, Mr. Speaker, I wish to convey to all my colleagues how I'm extremely, extremely proud is not a word I use often in my vocabulary, but indeed I am proud to see that we've had a smooth transition of power which many jurisdictions cannot enjoy even today. But the Cayman Islands, because of our forefathers and mothers, because of persons in your heritage like the late Mr. Hagbottom and others, we have that common thread embedded in our DNA that we want what's best, and indeed the driving factor, the impetus, is that we want to leave this stage a much better one. So I am so emphatically delighted to see you sitting in that chair. It's not the most comfortable one physically and otherwise, but I'm encouraged. I have the audacity to hope, the temerity to dream that Cayman is going to be onward, upward. It's not a panacea because it's a house of politics, but I can go to bed tonight feeling that the chair continues to be in good hands. May you be blessed and Almighty God light shine upon you forever as you continue to discharge your duties and the example of your love for this country as is common among all 19 here in this House. May it please you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Premier. You leave me blushing. The question is, be it therefore resolved that the Honorable Johani S. Ebanks MP and Honorable Joseph Xavier Hugh be and are hereby elected as members of the Standing Business Committee of Parliament? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The motion is duly carried. Madam Premier, may I call on you for the adjournment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it's my humble duty to ask for a motion for the adjournment. Sign it aye.
The question is, does this Honorable House do adjourn? Sign it aye. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The House is hereby adjourned. Sign it aye.